Welcome everyone watching on ITV and via livestream and call the December 14th, 2021 regular meeting to order with all board members present via Zoom webinar. Vice President Whitehurst Payne, could you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Stand, put the hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands.
We need to.
Our nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May be seen.
Thank you, Dr. Whitehurst Payne. Okay, I would like a motion to adopt today's agenda with items H2, and that's the External Auditor Annual Financial Statements for Fiscal Year 2021, and H3, our External Auditor Financial and Performance Audit Reports for Props S and Z and Measure YY, to be considered following D5 Board Information Reports, and Item G3, the Annual Organizational Meeting of the Board of Education, to be heard after all other business is complete. Get a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Trustee Beiser.
Seconded.
Seconded by Trustee Bazo. Thank you. Trustee Patterson.
Aye.
Trustee Beiser.
Aye.
Trustee Bazo.
Aye.
Trustee McQuarrie.
Aye.
Vice President Whitehurst Payne.
Aye.
And Barrera, aye. Thank you. Today's meeting of the Board of Education is a business meeting that is conducted in public. To reduce the chance of coronavirus exposure, the Board of Education is accepting public testimony via Zoom webinar for tonight's meeting. Board Bylaw 1025 sets the time limit for public comment on agenda items at 10 minutes per side pro and con, or 20 minutes total. Speakers will be able to provide testimony at the beginning of the appropriate agenda item, or at the end of the meeting for non-agenda public comment. The list of public speakers is attached to Agenda Item B2. Please listen for your name to be called. Speakers are listed and called in the order received. When your name is called, you will be allowed to speak. Please unmute yourself at that time. If you hear your name called and are unable to unmute yourself, we will call the next speaker. Once all speakers have been called for the item, your name will be called again. Please unmute yourself at that point. Zoom does not allow staff to access your personal device to unmute a speaker. Please follow along with the agenda so that you know when your item is coming up for discussion. All right, and we will begin tonight in Sub District A. Trustee Bazo will introduce our student presentation, the Miramesa High School Orchestra. Trustee Bazo.
Yes, thank you so much, Trustee Beiser. I'm very excited to share with you a video from the Miramesa High School Orchestra. The orchestra is under the instruction of Matt Mulvaney, and they're just fantastic. I believe if they're not the largest, I think they are the largest, if not one of the largest orchestras in the district. And there's a concert orchestra, as well as an orchestra for more beginner strings as well. And they shared this video at a recent Miramesa Town Council meeting that was also online. And it was wonderful to listen to and wanted to share it with all of you. It kind of brings back memories for me. I played violin. My dad was a musician in charge of our music programs in the schools that I went to, and I played violin for about 12 years. I still have mine, but I haven't played in about 25 years, so it would probably be a little rusty. But Matt is a fantastic instructor, and I'm almost a little jealous. I wish I had him. My instructor growing up was a little more grumpy. And so I wanted to share that first, there's going to be a piece, that's one that they, a classical piece that they've been working on, that it will come up first. Then they're going to do a actual holiday piece that they just learned, apparently, that day. So amazing that, you know, it sounds, it sounds very professional. Then there's a piece, these are all very short, don't worry, a couple minutes each, by a student, Hubert Pham, who is a senior. He has a 4.5 GPA, takes all AP classes. They performed at Carnegie Hall two years ago, and there's a picture in there, you'll see, of them at Carnegie Hall. And then he also performed with a separate organization at Carnegie Hall as well. Apparently he has an older sister who's also a very good musician. So, oh, one other thing I wanted to share is that they are performing tonight and tomorrow at Miramesa High School doing their holiday concert. If anyone's interested in tickets, you can go to miramesahighschoolorchestra.org. And with that, we'll run the video.
Thank you so much, Trustee Bazo. And of course, just Miramesa High School music program is just such a joy and a point of pride for our whole city. So, thanks very much, Sabrina.
Thank you.
Okay, we've got no items to report out on closed session, so let's move to Item D2, Superintendent Jackson, Administrative Assignments.
Thank you, President Barrera. Yes, we have four assignments I'd like to announce this evening. I was making the appointments. Vice Principal Marshall Middle School. And congratulations on extending what you do for children. Shannon Kumki-Stepner, again, Vice Principal Marshall Middle School. Vice Principal San Diego High School, welcome back home, Mr. Stepner. Josh Stepner, Vice Principal San Diego High School. And Principal of Nipqua Elementary School, our newest school, and certainly a big loss to us from a district perspective, but he's not going too far. Michael Goodbody, congratulations, sir, on your first principalship. Congratulations. Program Manager, Program Monitoring for Charter Schools, we have Richard Faraci. Welcome to San Diego Unified, and we look forward to your great work. Those are the appointments this evening, President Barrera.
Thank you, Superintendent Jackson, and congratulations to all those appointees. Item D3 now, our Associated Student Body Presidents' Report. At this time, we'd like our ASB students to introduce themselves. Please tell us about yourself and what's going on at your school, both academically and socially. And we'll start with Charlotte Gaynor, the La Jolla High School ASB President. And then we'll also have Julianne Sue, our Scripps Ranch High School ASB President, and also the San Diego Unified School District President of the Council of ASB Presidents. So why don't we begin with Charlotte from La Jolla High?
Hello, thank you so much for having me tonight. Like was already said, my name is Charlotte Gaynor. I'm a senior at La Jolla High School and am the current president of ASB at my school. I wanted to talk a bit about what has been going on with us, specifically about our past and our future events, and what a few students from La Jolla have been involved in recently. Everyone at La Jolla that I've talked to has been thrilled that we're back in person, especially all the seniors. We're really all looking forward to being able to attend all the school events that we've missed out on in the past year. We were able to have our homecoming dance on our softball field in October. We had our dance on the softball field two years ago, so the adjustment to having a dance outdoors really was not that big for us. Like all the other schools coming back from being online for an entire year, we have been trying to find a way to increase our spirit. And one way that our students really respond to that is by having Spirit Weeks. We, this week, are actually having a Spirit Week, and we decided to go with all sorts of different themes that we've never had before. Today was especially fun. We had an Adam Sandler Day, so everyone dressed like how Adam Sandler does in public. So we saw lots of oversized shirts, baggy pants, and sunglasses. You get the idea. Outside of spirit, ASB is working on finding a location for our prom, and we started planning our winter ball. It's going to be at the Air and Space Museum in Balboa Park this year, so we will be playing on the venue theme and having a space-themed dance. Everyone is really looking forward to it. That will be in late January. And then last, our fall sports team stood really well this year. We even had a freshman golf player make it to the state championships. She ended up ranking seventh in the state, which is very much an accomplishment. Our speech and debate team also competed recently. They went to a tournament in November, having 11 students compete with around 700 students from other states. They made it to the semi-improvised finals and had four students rank in the top six for the novice international extemp. Everyone at La Jolla is really proud of their accomplishments, and we are looking forward to the accomplishments from LJHS students to come. Thank you.
Great job. Thank you, Charlotte. Julianne?
All right. Hello, everybody. Thank you so much for having me again at this meeting tonight. Like I was introduced before, my name is Julianne Sue. I am the ASB President from Scripps Ranch High School, and I am also here representing our Council of the ASB Presidents. We've had a lot of very new and exciting events at Scripps. We're currently transitioning between, of course, our fall and our winter seasons. As I mentioned in our last meetings, our clubs have definitely been a highlight of our November activities. We were able to host our traditional club fair, and we're currently on, we're currently working on finishing our club portfolios on our website. As I mentioned in the past, this website was a great new opportunity for us to connect with those students, the parents, and the staff members. It's also open to any community members, so if you would like to check it out, our Scripps ASB website is open for all of you. Another exciting thing about our clubs is that they are working together with both ASB and administration. Leading up to our winter break, we actually designated this, these couple months, as the season of giving, and we're focusing on giving back to our community. And so we've had a couple of very successful drives. We have had our annual canned food drive and our menstrual product drive. In this year, we have had a blanket drive where we're donating blankets to children in need over the holidays. And then we'll be working on a voter registration challenge in the next few months. Similar to Charlotte, our athletics teams have also received recognition over the past few, and I'm finally so happy to say that we are done with fall sports. We're transitioning into winter. No more football games and tons of publicity. And speaking of football games, some of our groups have made it to the CIF games. We've actually had girls tennis, girls volleyball, golf, cross-country, field hockey and football. We all made it to CIFs. As you've probably heard, we went to the state championships this past weekend up at Saddleback College, and that was a great experience for all of us. We were able to provide free transportation to students, and that just ensured that anybody was able to come to the game and have a great time with our fans, our students, and all of our families up at Saddleback. Similar to Charlotte as well, we are currently in the middle of our winter Spirit Week. We're really focusing on unifying the students, engaging them in one last time before we split for two weeks. Similar to what Charlotte mentioned, we are experimenting with new Spirit Weeks. We are enabling our students to provide their feedback, and we want to let them know that we hear their voices and that we're working to integrate their feedback. And so we took the feedback from the past Spirit Week, and then we're trying something new this week. And so it's been really exciting to see all of the students dressing up, to the teachers dressing up as well. And it's just great for me as the president to see all of us record our memories within the photos. Shifting gears, we are planning ahead for next year, as we won't have time with one another until January, because finals are after we, after winter break. We'll be including new activities for students to de-stress and really take care of their mental health. For example, we are looking to provide student shout-outs. A new idea that we're trying out this year is actually engaging some therapy dogs for students. And of course, we'll be handing out items to make sure that they are well-fed. We'll be having free breakfasts, making sure that they have the pens, the pencils, any free tutoring that they need, and any support that they have going into their last few exams. We're also looking to host some more community-engaging events, such as movie nights and music festivals. This week is our, our concert band and our orchestra final concerts, and then we'll also be looking to host some outdoor concerts as well. We really hope that these events will not only encourage Scripps students and their families to come, but also some prospective students as well. We want students to come from Marshall Middle School, from the elementary schools, from the many businesses that help to support our teams. We just want this to be a really great opportunity for them to meet us and also to see the, to see the work that our students have been doing. Before I conclude, I'll give a very brief recap on behalf of the Council of ASB Presidents. We're working on our proposal for the Spring ASB Workshop. Where all class ASBs will be able to meet together, they'll be able to share ideas for next year, and we'll also be able to collaborate on many of our new projects. As I'm sure that all of you know, we've had many different changes in the regulations within the mandates as well, and so as leaders on our campuses, we have to constantly be flexible within our planning. And so we hope that this workshop will inspire our members to not only be optimistic and enthusiastic, but also to be self-motivators as well. Transitioning into 2022, we are hoping that we'll be able to continue the old traditions that we've had at our high schools, but then also make some new ones in collaborating between the different atypical and traditional high schools. And that concludes my report on behalf of Scripps and the Council of ASB Presidents. Thank you so much for having me.
Amazing, Julianne. Incredibly comprehensive report. Very much appreciated. Thank you. Okay, we will now ask Superintendent Jackson to give our superintendent's information report.
Thank you, President Barrera, and great job, Charlotte and Julianne and President Barrera. This is a tough one to follow, two amazing students each board meeting, but I'll give it a go. I want to begin by, you know, sharing that we continue to focus on the health and safety of our students and our staff. I know there's been lots of information in the news recently, as we have had one of our vaccine mandate injunctions, I guess, lifted. And so we continue to focus on maintaining the vaccine mandate for staff and students above 16 and older. It's going to be incredibly important for us to focus on this as we get into January, and remind everyone that all staff and students 16 and up need to be vaccinated to be on campus, learning and growing and developing together, and we want to encourage that. We also want to make mention that students on our high school campuses that are not required to have the mandate or eligible for the mandate by FDA approval will need to participate in our testing efforts, those who are unvaccinated. So we continue to do our great work, and thank you to our communications team for making sure that we're communicating and providing opportunities for everyone who is eligible for the vaccine to get vaccinated, and to make sure that everyone is informed about the importance of vaccination to keep our communities healthy and safe. Want to, want to push this and remind folks to enjoy the winter break, but be mindful and be safe out there. Mask up, be mindful of the gatherings, and just put some, some common sense into our everyday work as we go out and we're shopping and we're enjoying the, the holiday season. So want to make sure that everyone knows we continue to focus on the health and safety of our students and our staff. I want to piggyback on what Julianne said from Scripps Ranch and share congratulations to all of our fall sports, and a special shout-out to the Scripps High School Falcon Football Team, the coaching staff, the entire Falcon family. Congratulations on your state championship win this Saturday. I wasn't able to attend, but I hear it was great, great excitement, particularly in the last minute where the Falcons scored, and this is the first state title for the Scripps Ranch Falcon Football Team. Congratulations. And again, as Julianne said, congratulations to all of our fall sport participants. I also want to lift up, special congratulations to seven of our San Diego Unified students who were honored at the third annual 25 Most Remarkable Teens of 2021. I was able to attend this event with Area Superintendent of High Schools, Aaron Richardson, as well as our Principal at Henry High School, Michelle Irwin. And seven of our students were recognized, and we are proud of all of you, but I want to, I want to share their names and their schools. So Nicole Workington from San Diego SCPA, Ria Chambra from Scripps Ranch High School, Fay Chan from Canyon Hills High School, Sita Antel from Mission Bay High School, Leonardo Garcia from Kearney High School of Engineering, Innovation and Design, Aiden Callanan, Mission Bay High School, and Samira Hassan from Patrick Henry High School. Remarkable stories. Each of the students recognized, and many of the 25, seven high school, current high school students, but several of the students who were first-year college students were recognized as well, were from San Diego Unified. So congratulations to each of you. Next, I am extremely proud to announce, this is the second year in a row that San Diego Unified has received the Gold Level Recognition from the American Heart Association for ensuring the health and well-being of our employees. I would like to give a great shout-out to our welcome, our wellness program supervisor, Kate McDevitt. Thank you for all that you do, the entire staff, and everyone who has worked to make sure that San Diego Unified is a great place to work. In closing, I'd like to celebrate a special holiday event that's going on at Porter Elementary School. This is, this is going to be a great event. The San Diego Gols, for those that don't know, is our hometown hockey team. And if you haven't been to a Gols game, get down and support them. They are going to be delivering hundreds of free books to our students. Yes, free books to our students, so that they have something to read over the holidays and beyond the holidays. Thank you to Gracia Alchávez, also Joyce Ivániz-Roman, and Andrea Anderson of the San Diego Gols for working in collaboration to make this event special for our students. Much gratitude. I want to end by saying, I want to wish everyone a safe and happy holiday season. It has been a great beginning to the start of the school year, with many challenges that we continue to lean into, and make this a great place for students to attend, staff to work. So happy holidays, everyone. President Barrera, I turn it back over to you. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Superintendent Jackson. Okay, we'll now move to Board Information Reports. Who would like to jump in? Trustee McQuarrie, yes?
Sure. Thank you, President Barrera. So like Trustee Bazo inviting you to attend the Miramesa High School Holiday Musical Event, I want to invite you to attend Mission Bay High School's Music Department's Classical Night, being held tomorrow, December 15th at 6:00 p.m. Also, I want to acknowledge Julianne and her ASB Presidents for the work they are doing, and specifically tonight, I want to thank Charlotte Gaynor, La Jolla High ASB President, for her excellent report. So CSBA held its Annual Education Conference a couple of weeks ago. CSBA is the Organization of School Board Members, representing the 1,000 school districts in California. At the conference, Board Member Zachary Patterson was featured during the second general session, along with a panel of students who advocated for providing students with a place at the school board table, and were list, and they want the school board members to listen to the student voices and take appropriate action that reflect the student needs and interests. I was also on a conference panel with Dr. Kiki Ochoa, a teacher at Lincoln High School, Emily Nahart, a teacher at Garfield High School, and Rafael Álvarez, who is an instructor at San Diego Community College and is the Director of the Mesa Program. We shared our experiences of making the learning culture explicit, including mastering academic skills and developing a strong mindset for learning that would inspire and motivate students of all social, economic, and ethnic backgrounds to thrive. Also, Student Board Member Zachary Patterson and I attended a reception for a diplomatic delegation from Kenya. They were visiting San Diego to connect with city, school, and community leaders, and strengthen and enrich a San Diego-Kenyah relationship. They were also here to thank San Diego and students who are collecting shoes for the Masai School Program, where we are helping to build schools for the Masai students in the Amboseli National Park area of Kenya. All in all, very busy couple of weeks. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Trustee McQuarrie. Trustee Bazo?
Yeah, I'll just start by also saying that I attended the California School Board Association meeting, along with Trustee McQuarrie. It was my first time. I was also able to join the delegate assembly, so that was interesting. And just, I think what, it was, it was interesting to just be able to talk to fellow colleagues about similar things that we're going through, but also just to be in a room and, and, you know, talk to people in person makes such a difference versus being on Zoom, and so really enjoyed that. And one, one of the things I also noticed that, is that we have so many leaders in San Diego that were, as Dr. McQuarrie was saying, he was a speaker. We had many speakers from San Diego, and I was so impressed by that, that we have so many people that represent us and that have, you know, leadership roles at the state level, and got to spend the day with interim Superintendent Jackson. We had a great time. And so that, so that was just so, so much fun. Like I said, just exhilarating to be in person with people again. I also wanted to share that I'm going to be attending the Rose Bowl Parade to kind of be in line with, stay, stay with the, the music focus, I guess, for this report. From going from Miramesa High School Orchestra to the band, the Miramesa High School Band, as many of you know, is going to be playing in the, or marching in the Rose Bowl Parade in a few weeks, so it'll be my first time attending. I know there'll be many other district leadership there, and looking forward to being there and cheering on our San Diego Unified District Miramesa High School marching band. Thank you, I'll stop there.
All right. Thank you, Trustee Bazo. Trustee Beiser?
Thank you, President Barrera. I want to congratulate La- Thank you, President Barrera. I want to congratulate La Jolla High School, their speech and debate team for their work. I think that we really ought to take a look. We used to have speech and debate programs at high schools and things like that across the country. And a lot of those programs have been cut. It's great to see some of the speech and debate programs coming back. It's really a great opportunity for students to explore academics that might be wanting to find something like that to help with their development. I know that a lot of, a lot of students are really doing a great job at La Jolla High School with their speech and debate program. I would be curious to see what other high schools have programs like that. And also I could congratulate all the student athletes in the school district and especially congratulate the CIF State Champ winners at Scripps Ranch High School. Great job Falcons. Thank you so much, Julianne. So you've done a great job representing Scripps Ranch. I look forward to hearing future reports as we get towards the end of the school year. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Beizer. Trustee Patterson.
Thank you, Board President Barrera. On a, on more somber note, I want to, I want to ask all of us to take a moment of silence for the nine year anniversary of the Sandy Hook shooting. Thank you. Just going off, it makes me a little, makes me a little emotional. I think about the moment a few years ago, as you all know, I received a scholarship to study abroad for a time in my sophomore year. And I happened to coincidentally go to school with a student from Florida. I asked him, you know, what school do you go to? And he said, I go to Stoneman Douglas. And he was a sophomore in my, or he was a sophomore at the time in my grade. So I was like, oh, so you know, and he was like, I don't just know. It was, it was my classroom. It was my, it was my student, it was my friends. And you see right on his Instagram bio is one of his best friends with a Harden's name next to him. And it just makes me think about how we really, as a society, need to work to do more to protect our students. We've experienced it in our own school district years ago. We've, we see it on a monthly basis across the country. And it is just, it's so upsetting. I mean, it was 26, 26 students that died at Sandy Hook. And it is nine years away. It still hurts. These are students that would be in the education system now. Students would be growing, students would be achieving. And we have to recognize that when we talk about basic regulations, and this board has done a great job of supporting that in the past, and I hope we continue to do that. And I hope we continue to move forward because we recognize that more does need to be done. And it's not acceptable for this to continually happen on a weekly basis. I, I see information about shootings. I see threats and the fear, the normalization now to where people feel, to where people are somehow desensitized to these ideas. It's just, it's appalling. And it really, it's very, very upsetting. So I just wanted to spend my time this evening recognizing that and asking all of us and looking for a call to action to say, we need to continue to actively find ways to secure our schools, make them safer, stronger, as well as recognize that at a national and state level, we need to continue to push forward action to combat gun violence.
Thank you, trustee Patterson. Trustee Whitehurst Payne.
Thank you, President Barrera. Thank you for this opportunity. And they say out of the mouth of babes, Zach has a way of just bringing it right home to us so that it makes us stop. One of the things I'm very concerned about during this holiday that we all stop and take time to focus on mental health and just being nice to one another, saying something nice because people are leaving us left and right, and children are not secure. And we just need to start, just make it a point to say something nice to somebody, even if you're not feeling it, to just greet them or, I don't know, we just need to reach out more. And the things that I was going to report on are kind of mundane when you think about it. But if we could all just make that pledge that every day I will try to reach out to somebody, I mean, even if it's someone in the grocery store or wherever, and let them know that you acknowledge them as a human being and that they're worth something and that we as individuals take care of ourselves, but we also reach out to acknowledge others. And I just want to say thank you to the entire community for all the work that you've done to help our children over the last couple of years because we could not have done anything without you. And to all the parents and other students who've helped, teachers, educators, just thank you. That's what I want, want you to think about over the holidays and beyond. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Whitehurst Payne. Really important message for us right, right now. Okay, we will now move on to item H2. And this is our external auditor financial statements for fiscal year 2021. And, and we'll, we'll take these together, item H3, which is our external auditor financial and performance audit reports for the, for the bond measures. Can we just start with a, with a motion in a second on these items?
Okay.
Moved by Vice President Whitehurst Payne, seconded by trustee McCoury. Okay, Superintendent Jackson, could you please introduce these items?
Yeah, thank you, President Barrera. And as a reminder, this is our district's annual external audit, reporting for the fiscal year 2020 through 2021. And this audit was presented to our Audit and Finance Committee on December 1 at the public meeting. And the Audit and Finance Committee voted unanimously to approve and recommend the approval to the Board of Education. This evening, we do have Elizabeth Sav and also colleagues from Crow to present items H2 and H3. So welcome to you, Elizabeth, and I'll turn it over to you.
This is Jeff Jensen. I'm the partner on the audit and I apologize to Mr. Jack, Eric Doc Jackson, we switched it up here on you. She actually got stuck on an airplane today. So I'm going to cover the meeting here today and.
That's great. Thank you.
Dan McAllister, if you wanted to, you always like to usually tee up from an audit committee perspective, the audit there, would you like to start in front of me?
And you're on mute, Dan.
Dan, you're muted. Yes.
There it is.
Apologize for that. Yeah, I think it's important that we put things in context here. And we've got several different items to focus on that were items that surfaced during the audit process this year. The Audit and Finance Committee was asked to review external audit report conducted by Crow for the 2020-21 fiscal year. The audit firm issued an unmodified opinion, which means that they believe the financial statements present fairly in all material respects the financial positions of the district. That's good. Between January and December 2021, the committee was provided with periodic updates on the external and internal audits. And of the six prior year audit findings, five of those have been fully addressed and solutions implemented. And the remaining ASB internal control for 2020 was carried over to the fiscal year 2020-2021 audit report, which reflected a total of two findings, which is very, very good. One of the findings shows an issue for compliance on state programs while the state compliance issue reported is immaterial. It is the committee's goal for staff to eliminate all findings, as you might imagine. And we continue to urge staff to make this a goal of theirs as well. In particular, with respect to findings regarding ASB accounts, the committee continues to monitor finding in that area, however, and findings in that area are, are good. And we are pleased with the response to these findings by the district's finance division staff. The committee is impressed also, but not only with the ability of the district staff to continue collaborating with the external audits remotely during the pandemic, which also pleased the auditors because they were able to look at things more clearly with that support. Last two items here, the committee commends the district for recognizing the need for a more robust internal audit department by deciding to hire additional auditors and reassess the audit priorities and area of focus. That's something that we've talked about for some time. It's going to happen this next year, and we're very, very pleased that it will as the audit committee. Now, the committee also stresses the importance of maintaining strong reserve balances and would ideally like to see it at 5% to 6% in the near future. Currently, the district reserve is at the minimum suggested level of 2% and climbing. On December 1 of 2002, the committee, sorry, that's more reason, I think it was a typo, but 2021, the committee reviewed the draft of FY 2020-21 audit and concurs with the recommendations contained in the audit findings. I'll turn it back to our auditor unless there's some questions right now. But if you listen to him, maybe we can answer them all together at the end. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Hey, thanks, Dan. And I mean, Dan really summed it up pretty well there for the group there as far as how the audit went. So I'll just be very brief here and just say from here, so you can hear it directly from me as your auditor, that things went very well this year during the audit. As Dan mentioned, you had an unmodified opinion related to your financial statements, which is the type of opinion you, you want to receive from your auditors. You also had an unmodified opinion regarding federal compliance. And so this year, we had new programs to look at with all the additional federal COVID relief money that's, that the district has received and expended during fiscal 21. And so that was part of this year's audit. And then lastly, we did have a qualified state compliance opinion. And while the finding itself is really immaterial to the district, the state really doesn't provide the auditors with any sort of materiality to judge whether to modify or not. So when we have an opinion, when we have a finding in state compliance, we do have to qualify the opinion. So that's why that opinion was rendered in that way. Also, we'd like to just note for the board that there were no audit adjustments. So the numbers that were presented to the board as part of your audit actuals back in September are the same numbers in this audit report tonight without any modification by us as your auditors. So again, just in conclusion, things went very well. District staff was extremely helpful throughout the year. And this audit, you know, started back in March and has continued all the way through to last month or so. And so there's a number of meetings and visits that, that occur this year all remotely, but certainly face to face through Zoom and other means. And certainly appreciate everyone's hard work and being able to help us get this audit done and presented to you. You know, this report is not due to the state till January 31 this year. The state gave a blanket extension to everyone. But as has been the common custom here at San Diego, it's to get this report still done on time. And so a lot of that is dependent on your staff to get to provide us with things timely in order to be able to, for us to be able to reach our conclusions. So good job. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Jeff. So we'll take questions or comments from board members. But first, I just want to thank our county treasurer, Dan McAllister, who continues to provide such great service to our district. How many years now, Dan, have you been on our Audit and Finance Committee?
About 17 and a half.
Wow. It's just, it's, it's such a, it's such a privilege really for our school district to have you serve us in this way. Very much appreciated. And to, of course, all the members of the Audit and Finance Committee.
And I should add for you that the privilege is mine. This is a district that I came up through, Mission Bay High School, Go Bucks. Very important to get that plug in. But I must tell you that the district has flourished and done very well over the years. And it's a pleasure to work with all of you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dan. A board member, questions or comments for Dan or Jeff? Yes, trustee McCoury.
Yeah, I also want to say Go Bucks and thank Dan McAllister and the Audit and Finance Committee for their volunteer service. And I want to acknowledge Jeff Jensen, Crow, and the district staff for completing an audit during the pandemic. And thank you to the district and the business department for the outstanding work that they have done and the excellent report of an unmodified opinion. Great work, good job. And definitely we are indebted to you and your team for the outstanding reports that we're getting. And it also lets our communities know, our taxpayers know, that the funds and money that are being allocated us are being spent wisely. And we are being transparent and open and accountable for how we spend our money. And we have a lot of reports that are unmodified. For a $1.6 billion budget, annual budget, that's a pretty good deal. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee McCoury. Yeah, Vice President Whitehurst Payne.
I would say ditto to what Michael just said, but also, people always say a $1.6 million budget, but then we also have the bonds out there and they audit those and and we're managing probably, what, close to a billion dollars a year on that. So we really do finish closer to probably two and a half million, billion dollars a year through this. And I want to thank the audit team for their annual audits and doing it in a timely fashion. And Dan, I don't know what we would do without you, but you've been a great leader for us. And I think having you on the audit committee gives us more credibility. And I just want to say thank you. I say Go Bucks too. I was a teacher there at one time. And I believe your aunt or somebody was an employee over there at one time too.
My uncle was a teacher there.
Yes. So thank you. And I just hope you continue to work with us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the kudos.
Thank you, Vice President. Other board member questions or comments? I would just again, like to congratulate our, our finance team and working with the Audit and Finance Committee. I can't imagine a more complicated year to, to manage our funds with the expenses related to COVID, related to transitioning to online instruction and then transitioning back to in-person instruction and the different streams of federal and state money that's, that's come in. But, you know, the fact that our, our finance team is on top of it and, and does what the taxpayers intend us to do with the money that, that is, is spent on public education. Like I think Vice President Whitehurst Payne said, it, it gives confidence that the taxpayers know that when they invest in schools, the money will be spent the way it's supposed to be spent. And we very much appreciate your work. So with that, we will vote. Trustee Patterson. Aye. Thank you, trustee Bazo.
Aye.
Trustee Beizer.
Aye.
Trustee McCoury.
Aye.
Vice President Whitehurst Payne. And Barrera, aye. Thanks again. Thank you so much, Dan and Jeff for presenting tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, we will now move on to our item E1. This is Soon Instructional Matters. And this is the second read, I believe, of our, oh, no, I'm sorry. This is, this is our report on our proposed summer school extended school year site. So why don't we begin with Superintendent Jackson?
Thank you, President Barrera. Yes. So this is a plan that shares the school sites. And also want to share that we are excited to begin planning the implementation of our Level Up program for the summer of 2022. And this will closely mirror that which we did in 2021 that we reported on a few months ago and the success. I want to thank Nicole DeWitt for her work in leading, in leading this work. And so this plan will include the academic program in the morning, TK 12, with academics in the morning to meet the needs of students where they are and, and what they need with, you know, a single purpose of saying, we want to reengage and reignite our students and their passion for learning. And so our virtual high school, our virtual academy, I-Hi, will also be available for online programming and online learning. And also ESY. So students with disabilities with IEPs. And also E-S-Y, so students with disabilities with IEPs will also have the ability to have their needs met with support from related services in addition. So very excited about that. And we will continue, and you'll hear a little bit about the Level Up, Summer of Learning and Joy from our partnership with San Diego Foundation. So we will continue this work as the board approved that partnership going into 2022. So we'll have enrichment programs as well before and after school. So we're excited about that. And if there are any questions, we do have Nicole DeWitt standing by for any questions.
Great, thank you, Superintendent Jackson. So we do need a motion and a second on this item. This is, again, the school-based portion of our summer school program and our existing.
So moved.
Thank you, Trustee Beiser. And second by Trustee Bazo. Questions or comments? Yes, Trustee Patterson.
Yeah, thank you. This one's for, I think it's for you, Nicole. What are some of the methods that we use to assess students during our summer school on the, on the school campus of the formal school portion? Do we, are we planning to use the same FAST tests that we currently use? And is that going to be administered? Maybe this is too specific, but I'm interested, is that at the three-week blocks that that would work?
So it depends on the grade level. Great question. So for our elementary and for our middle school students, we will continue to use the FAST assessment. We actually do have an assessment plan that will help to assess students in the spring, so that way we could actually use a spring comparison to an end-of-summer-term comparison for those students that participate in the academic program in the summer. And then as far as our high school students, we really do measure success criteria around the number of credits earned by student and the letter grades that are earned by student as well.
Okay, that makes sense. One of the things I know I'm looking forward, I think we've done, I think we've done a pretty good job in the past few months, or really over the past year, and really making that shift and looking at those assessments throughout the year, kind of smaller, more focused on San Diego Unified to really get that data. I know something I'm hoping we can continue on is really getting that key information, seeing how, seeing the effectiveness of summer school moving forward. I know some of the, some of the misconceptions of the past, summer school's not this, not a full comprehensive program. And I know we're really putting forth our best foot, so definitely being able to show that would be wonderful. But thank you, I'm really excited to hear about that.
Thank you, Trustee Patterson. Trustee Bazo.
I just had a question, I guess along the lines of what Zach was mentioning, and that's about maybe students that don't fall into the really high-needs category for summer school, but still want to attend or maybe performing okay, but just still need some support. Will there still be places for them with the funding that's going to be provided?
Yes, absolutely. So kind of like what we did in this past summer, we first reached out to our priority students, so students that were really in need of that additional learning, additional credits. And then we did open it up broadly for any student who was interested in attending, so that is our plan moving forward as well.
And will there be a little bit more time? I know last year, we were scrambling a little bit just because, you know, it was kind of towards the end of the year that we had to work everything out. But I know parents were concerned because they didn't get a lot of notice, or at least that was the input I was getting. Will there be a little bit more of a timeline for people in advance to sign up?
Yes, absolutely. So what we're hoping to do is come back to the board in February, towards the end of February, to talk a little bit more about the registration process. One of the things we heard loud and clear is that there needed to be more accessibility with the registration process, as well as translated into all the different languages of our families. So we are working to find a platform that would be utilized not only via computer, but also via cellphone, and a way to really use that to communicate more broadly to our families about registration. So we're hoping to bring those future details to the February board meeting.
And then, sorry, one other question. Is it going to be at the same locations, or are they moving some of those sites around as far as where the summer school will be?
So we're actually going to be opening more locations than we did this past summer. Last summer, we actually had quite a few construction projects, which we had to take in consideration and access to facilities. So this summer, we are looking to open more sites. So you can see the list that was attached to the board. I know that is quite, quite a few sites that we'll be opening to make sure that folks have access to both the academic and the enrichment side of the house.
Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Bazo. Vice President Whitehorse Payne.
Thank you for that question, because I had noted, I noticed for Lincoln Cluster, I believe we have nine sites that are identified, but I was wondering how they were chosen because there are an additional five at least.
It was based on feedback from our parents and also our principals, wanting to make sure that their students had access to the programming. So we really did elicit that feedback and take that into consideration in selecting the sites.
Both positive and negative feedback, or?
Just more of the feedback around access. You know, this past summer, with the amount of facilities that we had open, it did limited access for certain families and certain communities. So we wanted to make sure that there were central services that lots of different neighborhoods could access.
Okay. It's an extensive list, and I'm happy about that. And I try to tell people that this past year was an anomaly, that we had to just really get this thing going fast. And I want to thank Communications Department Andrew and his staff, as well as the district staff, in putting together something for us. And the big star in this is, of course, the San Diego Foundation. But I really am delighted that we're giving folks enough time this year, this upcoming year, to really plan and to do some of the things with that. But thank you all for what, I mean, I know as a board, we don't give you a lot of time sometimes to do things, but thank you for what you did, and I'm looking forward to even greater things coming up summer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Vice President. Yeah, you know, Nicole, I don't know if it's too early to have a sense of this, but we know that last year, the academic portion was a dramatic expansion of the number of students participating in summer than probably we've ever had in the district. And do we have any sense of what we're preparing for this year in terms of, you know, total student numbers as compared to summer of 2021?
I mean, we're definitely planning for, you know, the numbers that we carried this past summer and, you know, giving ourselves a little bit of wiggle room in that and figuring out staffing and facility needs. But our expectation and how we've budgeted and planned is to have, you know, a similar number of participants this upcoming summer.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on this item. Trustee Patterson.
Aye.
Thank you, Trustee McCoury.
Aye.
Trustee Beiser.
Aye.
Trustee Bazo.
Aye.
Vice President Whitehorse Payne.
Aye.
And Barrera, aye. Great. And now we will move on to a report on our summer enrichment programs, our Level Up program with our partners from the San Diego Foundation. Superintendent Jackson, could you please introduce this item?
Thank you, President Barrera. And Dr. Whitehorse Payne jumped into a little bit of the opening. And as we were talking about 2022, thank you, Nicole, and I know Jen Roberson's working on that. This report is really talking about what we were able to do for our students this past summer. And as Vice President Whitehorse Payne said, and I was reminded by Pam Gray, who is from the San Diego Foundation, it's not normal for us at the San Diego Foundation, she's saying this, to do something of this magnitude in about eight weeks. And I said eight to 10 weeks. But what we were able to accomplish for our students, the expansion of about 30,000 students was incredible. And yes, I want to say thank you to Andrew Sharp, our Chief Public Information Officer, and our former superintendent Cindy Martin for what they were able to do in partnership with Susan Gwynn and the San Diego Foundation. I also want to say thank you to a few folks, because the general public doesn't see what happens behind the scenes. And I know Andrew's probably going to mention this, so I'm going to take a little bit of his thunder, but not too much. But Andrew O'Hara in Strategic Sourcing, Andra Green, I know she doesn't like to be mentioned, but their team, the finance team, just incredible job under tremendous deadlines and pressure and the magnitude of this project. Andrew's going to talk about a lot of other folks in terms of transportation, you know, food services, all of those folks, I can't say enough and how grateful. And one thing that we learned was that it's hard to pull off something and add that much stress to a system, and we did that. And Nicole and Jen, you were working on this project with Andrew. And what we learned was we have to get on this sooner. So what we've done is we've partnered again with the San Diego Foundation. The board approved that contract. We've been working in the fall. We're going to be launching work in the spring and investing in our extended learning opportunities during the school year and in preparation, Dr. Whitehorse Payne, for a tremendous summer. And as I say, we're going to keep getting better, and that is our commitment. So I'm going to turn it over to Andrew and Pam, who are going to present this evening. And great background you got there, Mr. Sharp.
Thank you so much. Thank you, President Barrera, Dr. Jackson, distinguished members of the board. My name is Andrew Sharp. I'm the Public Information Officer for San Diego Unified, and I'm honored tonight to be joined by Pamela Gray-Patton, the Chief Impact and Partnerships Officer and Vice President of Community Impact for the San Diego Foundation. As Dr. Jackson just shared, none of this would have been possible without their support. So Brent, could you please start the presentation, the first slide? That's great. So tonight, we'd like to share how thousands of San Diego Unified students spent last summer attending hundreds of free classes and camps, learning to play guitar or to fly a drone for the first time at locations across the city and programs operated by some of the best nonprofits in our community, the Girl Scouts, Junior Achievement, San Diego Zoo, the Lohia Playhouse, Elementary Institute of Science, Ocean Discovery Institute, and the San Diego Civic Youth Ballet. In short, we would like to share with the board how we followed through on your direction to help our students thrive during this global pandemic by giving them the best summer of their lives. And as you can see here, the, just under a year ago, our country and our schools were in a very similar place. We were severely challenged by rising COVID cases and a crisis that showed no signs of ending. And to help students come out of this crisis, we began planning for a summer program that would accelerate learning and address the social and emotional needs of our students. As always, we started with equity because we know that the COVID crisis has not only highlighted the inequalities within our system, in many cases, it's actually made them worse. And the second thing that we knew was that we knew we needed to serve all students. It's true that not everyone has been impacted by the COVID crisis equally, but everyone has been impacted. And so, Brent, if I could get the next slide, please. So we made a commitment to reimagine summer school and help our students level up. Brent, could you play that clip?
This is such a great opportunity for kids to come back from the pandemic and get a chance to be around other students and doing arts and music and theater and coming back from the pandemic strong. I am Paula Richardson. I'm the music teacher at Wilson Middle School, and I'm the Director of Summer Sites and Sounds, our summer camp at Wilson Middle School. They can choose an art class outside of their arts major, so art students can get a chance of studying instrument. Instrumental students can study arts, things like that. And then two days a week, we also are doing fun camp activities like arts and crafts and playing sports and doing silly games and karaoke and fun things like that. One of the big things I'm seeing is smiles, lots of smiling eyes. Kids are happy, kids are making friends on the very first day, rushing out to the car to tell their parents how much fun they had. Thanks so much to Level Up for providing these opportunities for kids this summer. It's really been a lot of fun.
All right. Thank you, Brent. So I think we can agree that that really does not look like normal summer school. In a typical year, we serve about 5,000 students, roughly evenly divided between students in need of credit recovery and students from our special education programs. This year, as Dr. Jackson mentioned, there were more than 30,000 students that took part either in one of the academic programs or in the enrichment programs. And as a couple people have also commented, speed really made that possible. So Brent, could we get the next slide, please? Despite the fact that San Diego Unified had not provided free summer enrichment programs to all students in as many years as anybody could remember, we really quickly mobilized around the goal. So on March 5th, the governor signed AB-86 into law that created millions of dollars and extended learning opportunities. And that was the point at which I reached out to the San Diego Foundation. And by March 23rd, the board was voting on a contract to fund this new partnership. And a month later, on April 23rd, we launched a website and began signing up interested families. And meanwhile, the foundation put hundreds of community organizations through a rigorous screening process to create the best possible opportunities for our students. And on July, rather, on June 21st, the first day of summer, the program launched. And so as Dr. Jackson shared, I want to recognize all the various parts of our organization who turned on a dime, put other projects on hold, and committed themselves to this goal. Without exception, every person that we asked for help gave us 100% support. And they mostly said, it's an honor to be asked. And a lot of them also added that our kids really deserve this after what COVID has put them through. Next slide, please, Brent. I especially want to recognize those team members who helped us keep our commitment to equity. All the free meals that were provided by Food and Nutrition Services made it possible for everyone to participate in these programs. I mentioned Special Ed and Dr. Jackson mentioned our real estate office as well. There's really no words to thank them enough for what they were able to do. So I would rather let the numbers speak for themselves. And as you'll see here, they issued more than 100 permits to programs that really might not have been able to serve kids at all if it hadn't been for the space that we were able to provide on our facilities. And they did it all in record speed. Brent, next slide, please. So there's a lot of others to thank. Dr. Jackson mentioned Strategic Sourcing. I always want to give a shout out to my team and Maury McGee and Communications and everybody who made sure that these opportunities got out into the community. IT, Ron Rody, Nursing and Wellness, who helped us run a successful program in the middle of an ongoing pandemic, especially to all of our colleagues from the Computer Help Desk who turned their entire operation into a help desk for summer school signups overnight. And I just want to give one quick story on how everybody approached every challenge as a chance to come up with a solution. When Trustee Patterson mentioned that some of the older students were still looking for summer jobs and internships, our CTE office worked with the San Diego Foundation to create an internship program from scratch, and they And they even helped some of our students get hired as counselors in some of the same summer camps that we were funding to provide enrichment programs for our younger kids. So it really was everybody stepping up. Brent, next slide, please. And also, I want to recognize, as Dr. Jackson said, somebody who's not with us tonight, our former superintendent Cindy Martin, who always encouraged our students to dream big. And when she challenged us to implement the board's vision, that's what she said. She said, "I want a summer program that helps our kids dream big. I want to know, why can't a little girl from City Heights go to ballet school over the summer, just like little girls from wealthy families?" And so that was the challenge that we brought to San Diego Foundation and Pamela Gray Payton, the Chief Impact and Partnerships Officer and Vice President of Community Impact. And Pamela was kind enough to listen to that dream, and she understood. And she thought about ferment, and she said, "You know, Andrew, it sounds to me like you want to give every student a summer of learning and joy." And she was right, and that was our tagline, and she really understood everything we were trying to accomplish. So I'd like to introduce my colleague, my friend Pamela Gray Payton from the San Diego Foundation.
Thank you, Andrew. Good evening, Superintendent Jackson, Board Members and San Diego Unified District colleagues. On behalf of the San Diego Foundation Board of Governors and President and CEO Mark Stewart, I am delighted to be here with you tonight to share with you some of the highlights of the incredible accomplishments of Level Up SD. The San Diego Foundation is a regional foundation serving San Diego County. As a community foundation, we work with San Diego community of philanthropists, nonprofit organizations, businesses, and education sector to inspire philanthropy, to enable community solutions to our region's most pressing issues. As the impacts of the COVID-19 pandemic hit children and educational outcomes came into focus, we at the San Diego Foundation knew something extraordinary had to be done to address the needs of the youth. And we were honored to be invited by the district to partner on delivering a summer of learning and joy, connection and healing to San Diego Unified students through a grant program to support enrichment programming as a component to Level Up SD. Together, at a monumental time and in a monumental timeframe, which you've heard so much about, the district, San Diego Foundation, and 88 nonprofit partners created over 500 program opportunities to offer nearly 14,000 students a summer like never before. Now I'd like to share a brief video to give you a glimpse into what we accomplished together. Brent, if you could play the video, please, on the next slide. Here we go.
A school year like never before deserved a summer like never before. In partnership with the San Diego Unified School District, the San Diego Foundation gave a summer of learning and joy to San Diego schoolchildren. From kindergartners to high schoolers, there was something for any age and any interest. Nearly 14,000 openings for summer enrichment were created by 88 local nonprofit organizations. More than 12,000 children learned, danced, engineered, created, and played their way through the summer at locations throughout the county. To all of our colleagues at San Diego Unified School District, our nonprofit partners, all the volunteers and staff members, and of course, all of the students and their families, we have just one thing to say.
Next slide, please. I love that video. I can't watch it enough. Over the course of the summer, all of us, nonprofit community partners, district colleagues, schools, and the foundation, learned together, grew together, and rose to the challenge of an ambitious and fast-moving program. The description of the variety and reach of the enrichment programs funded through Level Up are in a report, but this evening, I'd like to share with you just a few remarks on the key takeaways on the impact of the investment. In its first iteration, Level Up SD accomplished many things, but most importantly, together we grew our collective capacity across the education system and philanthropy to impact the lives of students. We introduced students to new life-changing experiences, and we supported social and emotional health by nurturing a sense of belonging, community, and healing. Next slide, please. We grew our collective capacity to impact the lives of children by forging stronger partnerships and coordination between San Diego's incredibly expanded learning ecosystem, schools, and districts. San Diego has the privilege of being home to over 1,000 nonprofit organizations and community-based organizations dedicated to youth development and education. We have long known that better coordination between community-based organizations and the classroom opens the opportunity to support the whole child, their families, and communities. This summer, we saw proof of what can be accomplished when we all leverage our respective strengths to take these programs to scale. In addition to the vital financial resources provided through the grant, the infrastructure that the district facilitated, which you've heard about already this evening, including transportation, resources, food, and important school facilities, made the delivery of the program possible. More importantly, the ability to be on school sites provided nonprofit organizations the opportunity to connect and develop relationships with teachers and administrators, who in turn learned about the work and programs offered by these community-based organizations. When asked if Level Up SD afforded the opportunity to forge new relationships and connections to the San Diego Unified Schools, 76% of awarded nonprofit partners said yes. Finally, Level Up SD opened the opportunity for the district and the foundation to establish new and more streamlined ways to work together and support partnerships between schools and community-based organizations. We feel we only scratched the surface and are excited to continue to build on this in 2022. Next slide, please. Level Up SD opened new extraordinary experiences and possibilities for students. After over a year of virtual schooling and little-to-no socializing, parents were eager to get their students reengaged with learning and their peers. Level Up SD not only reengaged students in the joy of learning, but the program also made it possible for students to participate in new activities, making lifelong friendships, and enjoy impactful experiences. Through the community-building and collaborative effort of Level Up SD, one nonprofit partner, the Chicano Federation, which ran one of the largest Level Up SD programs, offered a program with San Diego Loyal's. Students have the opportunity to enjoy soccer and learn and/or sharpen their skills as the Loyal's taught students daily at an eight-week soccer camp at the Olympic Training Center. Students built a community amongst their peers, the camp staff, and professional soccer players. San Diego Unified students also learned to code and build drones. They learned ballet and how to play the ukulele. Some students even learned to surf and kayak, while others practiced professional circus skills. Other students interned with organizations across the county and even San Diego County government offices. These are just a few of the many extraordinary experiences offered. Next slide, please. Finally, but perhaps most importantly, your investments in Level Up SD nurtured the social and emotional well-being of children that, as we all know, have been through an exceptionally challenging year. Much of the feedback we received from nonprofit partners, sharing parents' expressions of gratitude, focused on this aspect in particular. Many parent quotes describe the heartbreaking impacts COVID-19 had on their young children and the profoundly positive impacts of Level Up SD programs for supporting reconnection with friends and classmates and readying them for the transition back to in-person instruction. You see here an especially poignant quote from the student. I also want to share another comment from a parent of a student who attended a program provided by the San Diego History Center. The parent specifically asked if they relayed their message to San Diego Unified. And the quote is, "After a very tough school year, this experience with all of you brought my son back to life. He loved learning about the history of things and the activities you did every day. Please let them know, my son was reinvigorated emotionally and intellectually, and his mom and dad are grateful for your program and for the awesome staff." Next slide, please. What you see here in these six bullets could not have been accomplished without the enthusiasm, commitment, and tenacity of the nonprofits that participated. We extracted just these six bullets from the pool report which each of you received, but we thought it was worth noting here as well that these things are what we were able to accomplish together through Level Up SD. But most of all, most importantly, we want to acknowledge that none of this would have been possible without the extraordinary vision and commitment of San Diego Unified's leadership, administrators, and teachers. We are so grateful for the opportunity to have been part of this journey, but as great as the summer was last year, wanting done is not our goal. We are thrilled to continue our partnership with the district into 2022. Next slide, please. As I close, the foundation would like to thank Nicole DeWitt and Jen Roberson, who you've heard again this evening. They have been extraordinary partners to us in planning for the Spring and Summer 22 programs, and also to Andrew Sharp and the team that worked with us to launch in record time the program last summer. You have all worked diligently, and we are so very grateful for your partnership and collaboration, and we are excited to work with you and district colleagues planning for a summer like never before next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Pamela. Such powerful words and such a powerful partnership. Thank you. Thank you so much for everything. I also wanted to talk about the Loyal that, you know, we saw in the video, and you can see some of the students here. They were at the Loyal Celebration in July. And I just wanted to finish with something that we heard a lot of, and I think it's important for us to focus on as we think about the future. At the end of the last school year, we heard from a lot of folks who urged us just to give up on the summer. And they said, "Everybody's burned out. Everybody's tired. COVID has drained us all. People just want to be left alone." And we were worried when we first initiated this program whether that might be the case. And as you saw in the photo there and all of these videos, when we went to our principals and our teachers and our staff and we asked them to give up their summer vacation so they could stay and work with our kids over the summer and give them what they deserve, they did, and without any reservation. And it was really, that's most of all what I'll take away from this experience, aside from all the other opportunities that Pamela's mentioned, just the fact that when we asked folks to step up, they did. And it reminds me of, one of my favorite quotes is from Cesar Chavez, who always said that "Our ambitions have to be broad enough to include the aspirations and the needs of others for their sakes and for our own." And I think that's really true, that we came up with a vision this year that really included everybody's ambitions in it. And I just think that what made that possible was the fact that this board has such a clear vision. You know, I said the program started on March 5th, when the governor signed AB 86, but the truth is, it really started a month before then, when our board president, Richard Barrera, and our government relations director, Enrique Ruallacho, went to Sacramento and made it clear that we needed funding, not just for learning loss and to make up for all the tough times during COVID, but so that we could accelerate learning and help kids start to focus on the future again. And we fought for that money for the summer programs. And we fought for that vision that you all have, and so encouraged to hear everything's going to continue. So that's all I'd like to share this evening, and we'd be happy to take any questions. Thanks, Jackson.
Thank you. I'm going to turn it back over to President Barrera.
I just want to thank you, Superintendent. And Andrew and Pamela, thank you so much, you know, for bringing to life what we had the pleasure of experiencing this summer. Great, great report. So this is an information item, so if board members have questions or thoughts. Yes, Trustee Patterson.
Yeah, just such a pleasure to get to hear all that. You know, I'm looking at it, when looking at preparing for the meeting, I'm just thinking, wow, do the kids actually get to jet ski? I mean, that was, to have that in schools, I remember I got to, I got to go to one of the programs with Danny Amanga at Crawford, and it was incredibly fascinating. He's like, "Would you like to join us next week to go kayaking in the morning?" I'm thinking, "What? I'm going to be able to go kayaking?" I mean, it was just so incredible to experience these things in, I mean, a public school system, which completely would not have a track record to think like that you would be able to participate in this level of programs. I also add, you know, we talk a lot about this idea of continuous learning, and while I would definitely not be representing students to say year-round learning, what I will say is that it is really beneficial to provide this support and to provide this throughout the entire school year, helping students stay moving, catching up. And I think it's a really innovative focus we've had. I know, Trustee Bazza, you mentioned, I'll never forget the line, you go, "Well, we got the money, now we just have to actually deliver on what we did." And it was simple, but really, really powerful. And I think in this sense, we really delivered. So it makes me proud to see the results, and I know from talking to students that there was a lot of excitement around this. So thank you for all you've done, and it was super exciting. Look forward to the future of this.
Thank you, Trustee Patterson. Trustee McCrory.
Yeah, I definitely also want to acknowledge Andrew and Pamela for excellent report about an outstanding program. We did more than just bring students back. We actually brought them back and into new experiences that they would never have been able to experience before. So I want to thank you and Richard and Enrique for lobbying for the additional funding, for thinking outside of the box, that we need more than just a recovery program. We need an enrichment and a summer of learning and joy, which we've done. So we've, we received the money. We lived up to the challenge. We provided the outstanding program, and we're going to have another summer. I hope that we can continue the summer effort and into the years ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, Trustee McCrory. Vice President Whitehurst Payne.
I want to focus on one point that I think is really important in our community. The larger entities have their ongoing programs, but a lot of small nonprofits have the opportunity to develop programs, to participate, something that I know I talked to Pam about at one point. And that was really exciting to really see us reach out, not just to, I mean, the Girl Scouts and organizations that have a way of raising funds, but to really go in and pull up some of the smaller entities. I really found that thrilling. Even if you think about it, the guitars or surfing, those are small entities that may not impact thousands of kids, but at least it gives some students an opportunity that they would never have in their lives. So I really think that that was wonderful. And to hear we have 1,000 organizations and they knew they had an opportunity to participate, that they put things together well. So I just want to say thank you to the San Diego Foundation for reaching out to those smaller entities also. And I too would like to thank our president because he does have an ability to identify ways that we can attract funds to help our students in more than one way, and I want to publicly say thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Vice President Whitehurst Payne. Trustee Bazza, did you have thoughts? Yes, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I'd also like to thank the San Diego Foundation. I come from a nonprofit background, and I, you know, I really truly believe that partnerships with the community are so key to our success. And so I'm so glad that, I mean, it's ironic to me that we had to be in a pandemic to, you know, see this as an opportunity. But I know from being on school board meetings with school board members from across the country, that this is happening all over the country as far as this extended learning and summer opportunities. And I just think it's so fantastic that, you know, out of something that was, you know, very difficult, a difficult time, that something so wonderful has come out of that, and I'm excited to see that continue and continue to grow each year as well.
I just, again, thank you so much for the clarity of this report, Andrew and Pam. And of course, Pam, thank you, you know, for the incredible partnership. We did pull this together quickly, but we pulled it together with confidence that if... that if as a school district, we can reach outside of ourselves and partner with really the best in our community, that we could give our kids what they need and what they deserve. And so the San Diego Foundation, you know, stepping in so quickly as our partner and engaging, again, as Vice President Whitehurst Payne, you know, some of the biggest and most experienced community-based organizations to some new and smaller community-based organizations, you know, throughout San Diego, and giving opportunities that we know some of our students, you know, can typically have during the summer, but not all of our students. And this gave an opportunity for us to expand, you know, those opportunities for all of our students at a time when our students needed this. And your quotes from our students and from our parents, you know, was so clear about what our students were coming out of and what we had to do, you know, as, again, as a school district and as a community to pull together in support of our students. And we did it quickly, and that's amazing. And, you know, Andrew's point about people stepping up, you know, within the district, our teachers, the foundation itself, and of course, our community-based nonprofits, stepping up quickly and saying, we've never done this before, but we've got to figure it out. And we've got to, you know, make this program really available to as many of our students as we can. Now, we have some time, you know, to think about, as Superintendent Jackson said, you know, what next summer looks like. We've got a foundation that, you know, that we've, both from, you know, the expansion of our academic program that Nicole walked us through, and of course, from Level Up. So we have some time now to think about lessons learned. I know that this is a big part of what the San Diego Foundation is, you know, taking the community-based organizations and the district through. You know, what did we do really well? And what can we do better, you know, moving forward into this current summer? I know, and maybe Superintendent Jackson, you could talk a little bit about this. I know part of what became clear was the capacity of community-based organizations, you know, is really different depending on what part of, you know, San Diego we're talking about. And we do have some areas that we need to build that capacity, you know, in the nonprofit sector to be able to provide, you know, opportunities to our students. And I think we're looking at the spring as an opportunity to do some of that capacity building that could lead into the summer. So maybe Superintendent, if you could talk about that.
Yeah, thank you, President Barrera. Very true. I think, you know, us being able to look at data. I know Pam and her team, along with Jen Roberson, have been doing extensive work to make sure that we are building up our nonprofit partners in, for example, the Lincoln Community, the Bario Logan Community, the Kearney Community. And as you look at the report, I think, you know, we have a large number of students from those communities participating. And so we have to build up the nonprofits in those communities to make things accessible for our students. And so very exciting about that. And again, like I mentioned when I first spoke with Pam, one of the things that, you know, she was really looking forward to was time. Time to really build the partnerships and really identifying the other piece is identifying what our students want, what they really want to participate in. That's the other thing, because we did some great work. However, some of the feedback was some of our programs didn't have the capacity for all of our students. And we want to be able to meet those needs. And the board heard feedback, emails from parents saying, you know, we need to be better. And I think we're open to that. So very exciting about, you know, excited about those possibilities.
Thank you, Superintendent. And the last thing that I would add, you know, again, we're so much stronger when we pull the best of San Diego together in support of our young people. And this partnership between the foundation and the district, and then, of course, all of the community-based organizations that participated shows the strength of San Diego. I don't want to miss the opportunity to point out that there are also opportunities for the city of San Diego, for the County Board of Supervisors, for others in philanthropy to step up and provide some support. This program was solely funded this year by the district, but that doesn't have to be every year, and it doesn't have to be in 2022. And so we are going to encourage our friends and our partners from other agencies and other sources of philanthropy in San Diego to expand and continue this program.
We'll be calling.
That's exactly right. That's exactly right. That's great. Well, thanks again so much, Superintendent Andrew and Pam, for this great presentation, and Nicole for the presentation on the academic portion, which, of course, you know, the two programs worked hand in hand this summer.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your trust in the foundation.
Absolutely. Thank you. Okay, we will move on to item E3, and this is our annual SB 359 report about math placement for incoming ninth grade students. Superintendent?
Thank you, President Barrera. Yes, as you mentioned, this is our annual report required by SB 359 regarding math placement for students who are ninth graders. And this is an informational item only, and it'll provide the data on the math course placements for our students identified by student group. And I'm going to turn it over and thank Dr. Wendy Rankburg and Ron Rhodey for their ability to present this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Jackson, and hello, board members. I am finished with my jury service this week, so I am not coming to you from a dark parking lot in my car this week. So thank you all for your patience last week. So SB 359, as Dr. Jackson mentioned, is a requirement for us to report out on the placement of our ninth grade students in mathematics. This is an informational item, and the requirement to report out was suspended during COVID. So this is our first report since that time. So this is the current placement for our students in ninth grade. And you have the full table on the two-page report attached to this item as well. So this slide, I just want to take you through this and what this represents. So in the first column, you see the student groups represented there. In the full report, we have also the additional student groups required by gender and socioeconomic level. The second column is the number of students in ninth grade that that represents. So we'll do the first row across. 323 students identified as African-American. That represents 6.7% of our ninth grade students. Moving across for their ninth grade placement for this year, 93.2 of them were recommended for regular math using the criteria of previous course enrollment, teacher recommendation, and parent choice, which is a requirement under 359, that parents have a voice in the placement of their students into math courses. So 93.2 were recommended, and you can see that actual placement is lower, which indicates that for some reason, decisions at the school site or by parents, there were additional students placed in beyond the recommended criteria. So we have an advanced math. We have 6.8 students were recommended and 9.4 were placed into the course. So each of the student groups that we are required to report on are included in this report. And if you will go to the next slide, please. The findings are regardless of the student group, students were placed in advanced math courses at higher rates than recommended by the current policy. We do have an interim placement policy in place because of changes in testing and our circumstances of being in COVID. Item bullet number two, there is no case in any of the student groups where fewer students were placed into advanced courses than were recommended. The third finding is a persistent finding that we need to continue to work on. We have student groups that are disproportionately under-enrolled in math coursework. And so that kind of information helps to inform future action. Next slide, please. So we continue to believe that all students can achieve at high levels in the area of mathematics when given the opportunity and support. We're continuing to expand our math course offerings at our high school level so that we hope to see more students taking four years of math instead of the required three, and expanding opportunities, including additional classes for students in coding as well as data science. So that completes my report for SB 359, and I am available for questions as well as Ron Rhodey.
Thank you, Wendy. This is an information item. Board member questions or comments? Yeah, Trustee Patterson.
Thank you, Board President Barrera. I wanted to understand what constitutes the recommended current policy of placement? I mean, what grounds do we say that a student is or is not qualified to go into an advanced course? I was a little bit confused, and why wouldn't it just be maybe up to that parent or student when they want to excel in that, when they want to choose to challenge themselves in that category?
So the interim policy that we have right now uses the previous course enrollment, because previous course enrollment has consistently shown to be the strongest indicator of success in the next math course. We also use teacher recommendation, and then letting parents know that if they want their student in another course, they can make that request and the students can be placed in a different course. So we use multiple data points to inform that decision. And again, making sure that parents are informed that they have the opportunity to exercise options for choices for students.
Yeah, I appreciate that clarification because definitely we know that other indicators, I think teacher recommendation letters, even those can really contain bias that we don't intentionally want to put in the process of, I mean, being a gatekeeper to some extent, you know, any student that wants to excel can be advanced. And I think that's a philosophy that we should really work towards pushing. So thank you for that, and I'm excited to hear that we have another method that we're allowing and giving that opportunity for.
Yes, we want more advanced opportunities for students and more variety in our math courses beyond just it will. Obviously, we need to provide the integrated math sequence, but there are other math courses that our students want that we are designing and building so that students will have choices.
Thank you. Vice President Whitehurst Payne.
I think that it's obvious that I am kind of not disturbed, I just, this just goes along with everything that we've been looking at. The breakouts, the stereotypes, the advanced math. Half of the Asian students are actually placed. Filipinos, not as much. But when you look at the Latinx and the African-Americans, the percent are way down. And so, I don't know. What does this say to you, Dr. Wendy? What does this say to you?
Well, one of the things that it says to me is that we have to look at data differently. We need to look within our data. We are so frequently looking at comparisons between groups. We have some highly successful students in our groups. We need to look at our within-group data and find out, those kids who are experiencing success, what's happening for them? What are their experiences? And how do we replicate that and build on that so that we're not constantly in this comparison? But what's the within-group experience of those students? So I am starting to dig deeper into the data and asking questions about the students who are experiencing success. What's working for you? What do you have that's working for you in school? What kinds of things are you doing outside of school? So that we can increase those kinds of experiences for all of our students and lift up the achievement of the students. Because continuing to compare has not been working. We've been doing that for decades. It's not working. So within-group analysis is really a next step, and this really indicates the need to do that.
I like that answer because theoretically, if on a hypothetical basis, you should not be able to determine a group based upon the numbers. You should not be able to determine, if I looked at these numbers without having any categories labeled, I would say that the 49.5% students in the advanced math would be the Asian students without having that label there. And on the other hand, I would say the 9.4 or the 10.3 would be African-American or Latinx. That should not be the case. And I think you're absolutely right to start digging into groups individually to find out what's going on, because it takes me back to an example at the middle school. I'm not sure if it's Challenger or one of the middle schools in the Mira Mesa Cluster, and how this African-American young man and his mother came to me a couple of summers ago. And Cindy and I got involved in, Superintendent and I got involved in how he wanted to be in advanced class. And they were telling him through some reason or another that he couldn't do it because the class was overcrowded or whatever the excuse was. And his mother, it wasn't because he didn't meet the criteria. It was just that they thought, oh, it doesn't matter. It's not a big priority. And so after digging into it, we found out that this child needed to be placed. He was placed there. He's doing very well. I ran into them recently, and they were telling me how successful he is, and he's going on doing advanced math. And so if you start digging down into the groups, you might find that that is a barrier, that for some reason, schools get to that point and they say, oh, well, let's not push this child, or whatever the issue is. So I like that idea of finding out what's happening within groups. Or maybe that in the Asian group, they're pushing each other to really study. Then that's something we need to extrapolate to other groups. Challenge your peers to go into advanced math or something. But anyway, I like that answer. Thank you.
And Dr. Weger's paying, I remember that student as well. And because I have the ability to do so, I've been monitoring his progress also and making sure that he was doing well and getting what he needed along the way. So that guide on the side that he didn't even know was there.
Thank you. I didn't realize that, but it was, I don't know where I was, but I ran across them and they were telling me about it. So thank you for monitoring that.
It was Wangenheim, and I want to thank Matt Fallon because it was around class size, and I actually worked with Wendy as an area superintendent, and we actually created greater opportunities for more students because of this. So I would agree and thank them for also leaning into that to create opportunities instead of just looking at what was in front of us, Wendy. Thank you for your support on that.
Thank you guys for remembering. Oh, good.
I think you, Trustee McCrory.
Yeah, I also want to uplift Vice President Whitehurst Payne's comments about the importance of advocacy. And so I think where we have these situations where a strong parent or can advocate for their child, they can get the outcome, and that can be beneficial. So I hope we're also including those opportunities for everyone. We want to have our champions. We want people to stand up and advocate and support students for risking and taking the opportunities that are made available to them, and we do need to remove the barriers. A question I have is, I know this is the first report, so we'll be looking for a second report and identifying trends. And I think it speaks to Wendy's and Superintendent Jackson's comment about digging deeper. So I'm wondering, what questions will you be looking for in order to identify trends as we begin to look to the future for providing greater opportunities for students to move forward? And then, secondly, are there adjustments after the placement to where students can be mid-year promoted or in some cases, maybe be returned to a traditional program?
So a couple of things. So this particular report So this particular report for SB 359 is done annually, so I'm watching trends across time. Another trend that I'm watching for is that we should, over time, quit being able to make predictions of math placement based on the student groups where students are assigned in this particular report. And then in terms of adjustments throughout the year, one of the things in SB 359 is that within the first 30 days of instruction, to look at student placement and to make adjustments. Because of where we are in time with COVID, we don't have some of the information that we've had in the past, but that is typically something that is done and will continue to promote moving forward and making suggestions that schools go back and make adjustments. But they are to make adjustments within the first 30 days because we are again looking at high school placement, and of course, they have to have a certain amount of time in class to earn that credit.
Thank you.
trustee Bazo.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, is this report something that is new? It says annual, but I was wondering if it has been, you know, over time and if some of the results are, you know, because of COVID, you know, issues with any learning loss there? And, you know, so I know Dr. Mike mentioned about the trends over time, and are we seeing from past reports to this one, are they similar? Or maybe this is a new type of program that I'm just not familiar with yet?
So, great question. So this is not a new report that, as I've said, we have to do it. We do report out on it annually. We were given reprieve during COVID, so we have a year gap in there. But I did compare the last time that we provided this report, and the percentages are down slightly, but the overall trends are the same in terms of the recommended placements and the actual placement still holding. So we expect to see changes over time in the legislation itself. For SB 359, when this went into place, they did expect a few years to see some changes. And I think some of the work that we're doing in the area of math and what I mentioned earlier about starting to analyze the within-group data and instead of just comparison data will help us to leverage and make some changes in these reports moving forward. So in subsequent years' reports, we could do multiple years across time so we can start to see those trends together.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, you know, it's the timing of this report. Sometimes, you know, our ability to have these discussions, you know, at board meetings is a little disjointed because we have this annual report where we, you know, have to, you know, report out on this data. And we also have a huge, robust policy reform that we are moving forward on. Whoops, my battery just went out. I don't know, can people hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So I was saying that we've got a large policy reform around math that we are working on, which of course is informed by this data. And not just the data, you know, that we're required to submit in an annual report, but the, you know, the data and the way that we've been looking at data for several years, which is leading to sometimes when you have disparities at this level and as, you know, Wendy has said, that, you know, we just kind of see year after year after year, we can't just approach the problem as tweaking around the edges. We've got to realize that there might be something fundamentally wrong about, in this case, dividing students as they enter high school between advanced math and regular math. In other words, if we really believe that our students are capable of doing more regardless of what subgroup they're in, the policy that we're moving towards is breaking down these distinctions and lifting standards for all of our students so that we're moving, you know, all of our students into higher level and more relevant, you know, math education in high school and not just deciding in eighth grade that, you know, we're going to continue to, you know, kind of put a large percentage, the large majority of our students on a track towards math that may not be as relevant or as rigorous as we believe our students need, you know, to go forward in the world, you know, when they graduate from our schools. So Wendy, I wonder if you could just talk, you know, briefly here about, even though the agenda item tonight is not our policy reform around math, if you could talk a little bit about our policy reform around math and how that, how this data, you know, moves us towards that larger policy?
So a little bit around that, our policy work, the very first thing that we're doing is we are making sure that we connect with every single high school cluster. So I have had Ally Martinez, who is our instructional coordinator for math, and Patrick Callahan, who is our consultant, work with our area superintendents to start to calendar times to listen in and engage in dialogue with parents and interested communities, interested community members in every single one of our clusters because it's more than just a change of policy. It's about changing a mindset and having a belief that all of our students can and breaking down those barriers and that breaking down barriers for all doesn't mean less for others. So we are working in with each cluster to have those conversations, engage with those communities because merely changing the policy is not going to be enough. So the first step that we're doing in that policy is listening in at every single cluster. We want all voices heard, not just some voices heard. So that's where we are in that process right now, and we will be bringing the results of that forward to the board when we have the policy complete.
Great, thank you. And again, I apologize because my screen went out for a second. I can't see folks. So board members, if there's anybody that has additional thoughts on this item, just please.
Yeah, President Barrera.
Thank you, trustee Bazo. Yep.
Thank you. I, you know, I don't want to repeat it too much, but I really think that Zach has some very good points. I do think that we have to be consistent with regard to this. Some schools have, you know, prerequisite exams that the sixth graders take and that that kind of, you know, determines what kind, whether or not they have the skills required to excel or to even pass a higher-level math course. But I definitely think that we have to take a look at this program and see how we align with the California content standards as well to make sure that our course alignment works and that we're not setting students up to fail by accelerating their math coursework if they don't have any of the foundational skills that might be necessary. But along those lines, I do believe that there's a lot of research that heterogeneous classrooms result in higher levels of student learning for all. So with that, I just want to thank Dr. Wendy for all of her work and the teams working on this, and thank you so much for reaching into all the clusters and making sure we're communicating and listening. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, trustee Bazo. Okay, it looks like my screen is back. So without further comment, thank you, Wendy, for taking us through this report and this conversation. Yep. Yeah, sorry, trustee Patterson, yes.
No worries. Yeah, so definitely, thank you, trustee Bazo, by the way. I agree with you, you know, you are a math teacher, so I do appreciate that expertise and that sense of where you do want to value that exam in order to ensure success. But I just wanted to cover, I definitely do agree that this is a much larger community discussion. I will tell you, this is a long, this is an ongoing debate at the state level as well as when I talk to students. I surveyed my advisory board actually on this very topic two weeks ago, and I did not get a singular student that said that they do not feel that accelerated classes or in advanced class of some sort is not beneficial. And that was even for the students that were not in advanced classes. The way we model our advisory board, we work to is to have students from each geographic sub-district. But I will say that I think that a community discussion is important because I don't think that we're on the same page in terms of where everyone sees that value. And then I can also say in communicating with my advisory board, listening to what they've had to say and then talking to students, there is, there is a sense, and I know I can see this, that there are students that move faster and that we have to find a way to strike that balance and to make sure that for students that do move faster, students that aren't going to be, that aren't going to be bored in the classroom or students that aren't going to be quite as, that aren't going to be quite as engaged, I would find that it would be okay to talk about this idea of accelerated math. And I think this is a larger community discussion and one that I look forward to hearing about.
Thank you, trustee Patterson. Okay, why don't we move on to the board consent agenda? Can we get a motion on items?
So moved.
Item F6, thank you, trustee Bazo, and do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. And we've got one comment on item F2, and was that? Oh, not present. Okay, so without any further discussion, trustee Patterson.
Aye.
trustee McQuarrie.
Aye.
trustee Bazo.
Aye.
trustee Bazo.
Aye.
vice president Whitehurst Payne.
Aye.
and Barrera, aye. Okay, we'll move on to, can we get a motion on item G1? This is our board member appointment to the California School Boards Association Delegate Assembly and to our.
So moved.
Thank you, trustee Bazo, and do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, trustee McQuarrie, trustee Patterson.
Aye.
trustee Bazo.
Aye.
trustee McQuarrie.
Aye.
trustee Bazo.
Aye.
vice president Whitehurst Payne.
Aye.
and Barrera, aye. Okay, that takes us to item G2, which on the surface, looks like a pretty pro forma, the annual readoption of our board bylaws and governance policies. However, we are including in this item this year a recommendation coming forward from the National Conflict Resolution Center around a code of conduct that NCRC has developed and is encouraging public agencies, not only in San Diego but around the country, to adopt. The work that we do to actually implement policies like this, we take on in our governance meetings, which we have, you know, roughly quarterly. And so included in this item is not only the readoption of our board bylaws and governance policies, but a recommendation from vice president Whitehurst Payne and me that we signal our intent to adopt the NCRC code of conduct for our board meetings and that we clarify that at our next governance meeting, we will do the work to identify how we will implement that policy at upcoming board meetings. So that is part of this item. So with that, I'll ask for a motion and then we can have a discussion.
So moved.
Thank you, trustee Bazo, and do we have a second? Yeah, trustee Bazo, thank you. And any further discussion on this item? Yes, trustee Patterson.
So just to be clear, just since I haven't, apologies, I haven't read that portion. Was that attached or, let me get, just so I can get that clear, I want to be sure if I did read it, then I know what I'm looking at.
Yeah, it was, it's in the recommendation in the board packet that you have on this item.
Okay, let me see that. Okay, that portion, all right. So this is our intention and we will, have we been sent the formal, the formal words? Just because if I want to be sure that I got to see that specifically, this is the intention though, right? Not the formal adoption of the word by word?
Yeah, this is the intention and we'll formally adopt the code of conduct at our governance meeting. Yep, thank you.
Thank you, sorry for the confusion.
Okay, with that, without further discussion, trustee Patterson.
Aye.
trustee McQuarrie.
Aye.
trustee Bazo.
Aye.
trustee Bazo.
Aye.
trustee Bazo.
Aye.
vice president Whitehurst Payne.
Aye.
and Barrera, aye. Thank you. Okay, we'll move to item G4, and this is the update on our superintendent search and announcement of finalists. So I'll just give a little context here. So we know that when superintendent Martin was appointed as the deputy United States Secretary of Education, we, at that point, formally appointed Dr. Jackson as our interim superintendent, and that happened in May. And what we identified at that point was that we were going to ask Dr. Jackson to serve in this interim superintendent role at least through the end of the year, which would give us time to conduct a robust process of engaging our community around the selection of our next permanent superintendent. And in order to do that, we appointed a committee, a very large committee of over 40 stakeholders representing our students, our parents, our employees, our community partners. And we asked that committee, which was chaired by Christopher Rice Wilson, to, before it moved forward with just posting, you know, an announcement for the job and then screening resumes, we asked that committee to take the extra step of engaging the community in a series of town halls and forums that would allow members of the community to come forward and say, this is what we're looking for in our district over the next several years, and then based on that vision, this is what we are looking for in our next superintendent. And we engaged the National Center for Education and the Economy to conduct those community town halls. There was wide participation, but as the committee identified for us at a previous meeting, we've got more work to do to, you know, continue to bring out the voices of our community that we don't normally hear from. But there was also clear consensus around three major concepts that came from that process of community engagement where we had over 1,000 people, 34 different town halls. And those were, number one, that the district needs to really double down on our commitment to equity over the next decade, and that we really need to be a district that walks the walk when we talk about every student receiving what they need and when they need it in order to realize their greatest potential. And so that focus on equity and, you know, so much of the conversation we've already had tonight, you know, we've seen, again, we keep coming back to this value of equity. But that value came through very strongly in the, in the community conversations. There was a second point of real consensus in the community dialogue, and that is that education is about educating the whole child. It's not just about, you know, sort of the basics that, you know, traditionally we've thought of, you know, reading and math and science. It includes mental health and that part of our, part of our job as an education system is to promote and support the mental health of our young people. And that full education obviously includes emphasis on arts and music and language and all of the areas that we value that, you know, frankly, over the last couple of decades, you know, at the federal and even at the state level, have been marginalized in this overemphasis on standardized testing around reading and math. And so the community came together and said, no, we want to define education in our district as education about the whole child. And finally, there was clear consensus from the community that the district needs to build its capacity and its infrastructure. build its capacity and its infrastructure to better engage the community in an ongoing basis. That, and it's not just our communications, it's every, it's the way we go about our work and the way that we go about making decisions. And we heard from, you know, Chris and the committee that the committee felt very strongly about the value of the work that they did and that that work of engaging our stakeholders and, and working through even areas of disagreement and areas of conflict should not end with this process of selecting the permanent superintendent, but should be the way that San Diego Unified does business. And so creating an infrastructure to permanently, you know, engage all of the voices in our community around the, around our ability to make decisions was kind of the third point that came out of that conversation. And so with that, with that process of community engagement and with those three clear points, the committee was then able to work with Acacia, Thede, and HR in crafting a job posting that reflected those community values. And so the job was posted, I think in early October, there was a timeline for applicants. People applied, you know, for the superintendent position. The committee then came together and screened those applications. And as we had asked for when we appointed the committee at the beginning, the committee then recommended to us as a board, a group of applicants that they felt best fit, what the community was looking for. And they asked us to interview those candidates. The board met last week and we did interview the candidates that the committee had, had sent to us, had recommended to us to interview. And based on those, those interviews that we conducted last week, the board unanimously made a decision on who we will now advance to a public vetting process as the finalists for our job. And I know I'm keeping everybody on pins and needles, but I just want to point out here that the next step in this process, which is unusual, not unprecedented, but certainly unusual in the appointment of a, of a leader of a, of a public agency, is that the applicants will be made public. Everybody in our community will know who these finalists are and will have an opportunity to do their own research and, and learn as much as, as they're interested in about those candidates. And then we will come together on Monday, January 10th and have a full day of kind of putting these finalists through their paces and, and vetting candidates. And it'll be everything from a breakfast meeting with community leaders to meetings at a couple of different schools in different parts of the district where the candidates will have a chance to meet and answer questions from a broad group of stakeholders, including focused time with students. And then we will have an evening session where the candidates will be together and answer questions in a, in a, in a large public setting. And from that, we will ask the community to weigh in and to send us, you know, your impressions of, you know, what you heard from, from these finalists. The board's intention is later that week to come together and make our decision and by, by the middle of January to announce our permanent superintendent. So with all of that, let me announce the, the finalists that we are bringing forward as a board. And they are Dr. Susan Enfield. Dr. Enfield is the superintendent of the Highline Public School District in the state of Washington, a long distinguished track record both at Highline and before that at Seattle Public Schools and other school systems. And we appreciate and welcome Dr. Enfield to participate in this process. And then, of course, we are also very excited to announce that our, our other finalist is Dr. Lamont Jackson, our interim superintendent, who has been with our district his whole career, starting as a student, as a teacher, as a principal, as director of HR, as area superintendent, and now is our interim superintendent. So we can't express enough our gratitude to our committee for the work that it went through in listening to the community recommending candidates for us to interview. Not a lot that we can disclose about that process, but I will say that our recommendation of Dr. Enfield and Dr. Jackson is very consistent with the recommendations coming forward from the committee. And I can't thank enough Dr. Jackson and Dr. Enfield for your willingness, not only to apply for this position and, and go through the process, but your willingness to participate in the end part of that process, which is a public, you know, a public vetting. We know not, not everybody would be willing to do that, but we think that in San Diego, it's important that somebody who wants to lead our schools is willing to get out there and meet our, meet our community and get to know our community in, in order to show their commitment, you know, to, to, to lead our schools long-term. So with that, we again are pleased to announce as our finalists that we're moving forward, Dr. Susan Enfield and Dr. Lamont Jackson. All right. Now, I don't know if any other board members had any comments on this, but that's an information item. All right. Now we'll move on to item G5, which is both an information report and an action item. And this is our report that we're very much looking forward to from our Independent Citizens Oversight Committee on Racial Justice and Equity. As we know, this was a committee that we appointed a year ago, and it's a group, again, of members of our community, including our students and people who, who have worked on behalf of young people in our community, you know, for, for a long time. And we're asking this group to hold us accountable as a district. So what we're saying to this group is we are expressing, you know, that our commitment is to become an anti-racist district. And in particular, we are expressing a goal of getting better around some key areas, the diversity of our staff and having our staff come to better reflect the diversity of our students, that our, our curriculum and the way that we go about teaching so that the experience of students in our district is, is different than what it's, you know, traditionally been. And of course, that includes the, the taking to scale of ethnic studies, interrupting racist practices around student discipline, around grading, and the conversation that we just had about, about placing students in, in, in courses like, like math and, and advanced courses. So we've expressed goals, we've, we've created policy, but it's not enough for us as a board to just say this is what we want to do. We need to have people from our community come together and look at, look at our results, look at our data and report, not just to us as a board, but report out to the entire community, are we doing what we say, you know, we want to do? And this process borrows from the notion of an Independent Citizen Oversight Committee that's established in bond measures, where when we go to the taxpayers and we ask them to invest in our schools, we have an independent committee that reviews our work and reports out to the public, are we doing what we said we were going to do? And same concept we applied to this creation of an Independent Citizens Oversight Committee. And so tonight, we will hear a report out to the public about how we're doing as a district. And we'll turn it over to Superintendent Jackson and, and Acacia.
Thank you, President Barrera. And you opened greatly for Acacia. So I'm going to turn it right over to Acacia, who will take it from here. Thank you.
And our chief of staff is going to giggle at me. I'm going to invite our co-chair of the ICOC, Mr. Jordan Harrison, who is actually going to lead most of our conversation tonight.
Thank you, Acacia, and thank you all for allowing me to speak to you all today around the work that the committee has been thinking about over the last year. I think we've entered this work at a very interesting time for the committee in the context of knowing that there were a lot of reforms and different initiatives that were being implemented while trying to look at data post-COVID, during COVID. So a lot of the work, as we were understanding some of the policies and the impact on the data, put us in a place of really saying, we might need some more time to understand how are some of these initiatives being implemented? But we're able to get some initial thoughts from this year of conversing and looking at some of the initiatives that we have. Acacia, will the, will the PowerPoint be up or can I just?
Yes. So Ms. Stolt, can we ask Mr. Johnson to go ahead and start that presentation for us?
Perfect.
All right. And we're going to start, can you go, let's see, well, that's on slide four. So we're going to go up to slide two, I think is where we need to be. All right. There we go, slide two. Okay.
Perfect. So over the last year, this committee has been dedicated and excited to reporting back today on these key areas that we were looking at as a committee, the interrupting discriminatory grading practices, dismantling discriminatory discipline policies and practices, the implementation of ethnic studies, the transformation of school police, and staff diversity. So a lot of very key and heavy topics that, again, we were looking at in the context of pre-COVID numbers, during COVID numbers, and trying to see how are some of these new initiatives and reforms really impacting some of the students? And on the next slide, I think Acacia is going to talk about the frame of how we're thinking about how these are being implemented and the effectiveness of them.
All right. So if we can proceed to the next slide, please, we're on slide three. And in slide three, what you'll see is the descriptors of progress that the committee wound up settling on for this first annual report. As Jordan said, I have to tell you, this committee is so impressive and so reflective on the work that is happening. And so what you're going to see tonight is these general descriptors that are used. The board may recognize some of these because they're also used in some of our other work when we talk about our progress. So these are the descriptors that are used for this evening, and we'll move on to the next slide where Jordan will give us the update in our first area, which is, if you proceed to the next slide, Brett, we're going to look at interrupting discriminatory grading practices first. And then if you scroll to the next slide, what you'll see in our presentation is there's going to be a section slide that talks about which topic we're on. We're going to show the list of the actions that were taken in 2021. And then I'm going to turn it back over to Jordan, who's going to actually talk about, we're going to look at slide six now. And we're going to talk about what the committee has given as a descriptor of the progress.
And, and for this category of interrupting discriminatory grading practices on the next slide, sorry, whoever's doing the slides as we go through them, you'll see where we placed, the committee said the district was at is developing. And part of this was knowing that some of the grading practices were still new and being introduced across the district, looking at some of the data, not having data to say a pre and a post of how this might be looking. But you'll notice our recommendation was just to continue with the two-year plan from 2020 and 21, using the updated academic and citizens marks. And I'm not going to read all this slide to you. But one of the questions I did, that the committee really reflected on was how is the district going to identify and monitor some of the non-academic factors and/or unconscious biases that could contribute to the lack of academic opportunities or access to the core curriculum and challenging academic courses? One of the themes that the committee talked through across all of the different key areas was the importance of how are some of these things being tracked and communicated? And is there a key place where we can look in reference and the community can also be engaged in that process to know how are these things being tracked, what are they being defined as, and how could we understand them? There are some other questions there, but for the sake of time, I'll leave those to you all. But that was a key question that we wanted to reflect on when it came on to discriminatory grading practices. And on the next slide, yeah.
Yep, we're going to go to the next section, which is dismantling discriminatory grading practices and policies. If you scroll to the next slide, you'll see there a list of the actions taken in, by the district in 2021. What you'll also see as a theme in here that I failed to mention the first time is that every one of these areas of focus is embedded in the LCAP. So all of this work is reflected in one of our most important guiding documents as a, as a district. It's where we spend our resources, it's how we spend our time, and it's how we spend our money. And so I'll turn it back over to Jordan to talk about the committee's descriptors.
Thank you. And again, on the, on the next slide, you'll see the category that we rated this one as is also was developing. I think especially we were, we were excited about the restorative justice and practices implemented district-wide, but also not having the data of how are restorative practices really decreasing the suspension expulsion rates that we're seeing from this semester or next semester. So that's why we labeled it as developing, that there are a lot of exciting initiatives that are currently on the table, being worked on, done at the site level, but also interested in having more of that data once they're being implemented with students back in school to see, is, are these practices really disrupting and dismantling some of the discriminatory policies and practices? So the recommendation, continuing on that two-year plan, using the restorative matrix and utilizing district and site-level adult champions to support students and parents prior to the suspension and expulsion practice. This is one that I think the committee was really interested in next year, next semester, having that data to really understand how are restorative practices truly decreasing, declining, and hopefully stopping the suspension and expulsion of students? But we didn't have that data yet to really see, are some of these initiatives really making the impact that we would like to see just yet? And next area.
And I think we can scroll in, scroll past this one. These, again, are questions that the committee's focused on. And so the next one, everybody will be very familiar with because we just did a lovely presentation last week on this. So I'll let Jordan go into the slide, you can skip to slide 13, please, Brett, and I'll turn it back over to Jordan.
Yep. And, and again, we saw this as developing, knowing that the ethnic studies implementation is still fairly somewhat new. And I think we also relied a lot on the phenomenal work that we know the ESAC committee is doing and wanting to make sure that we're not crossing too many lines of what the ESAC has oversight of, but really working in conjunction with the phenomenal work that they've been doing. They actually had a representative join one of our meetings, share about what they were doing. And a lot of the questions that you'll see at the bottom of this that we were interested in was what are the incentives for teachers to participate in ethnic studies? How does our committee stay in line with ESAC? And really being, working in conjunction with ESAC as they move forward to really inform how ethnic studies is being implemented across the district?
All right. And our next area of focus is the transformation of school police. If you scroll to the next slide 15, you'll see the actions taken in 2021. And I'll turn it over to Jordan to give the next section on slide 16.
Perfect. For the next slide, we actually stated this one as beginning, particularly because there were a lot of new initiatives that we just didn't have any access to data on to seeing, are these initiatives, these interventions actually working? And so we said this is beginning because we needed to see more data around what's going on with school police on campus. The committee recommends continuing the assessment of school police interactions with youth and the community, continue to provide training. And in the next slide, you'll notice about seven questions that we really had, thinking deeply about what does it mean to really transform school police? What, what does that require? What does that fundamentally shift? So one of the first questions at the top is, are school police needed in San Diego Unified? And if so, really unpacking what is their role? We looked at some larger districts that have more officers and greater numbers of students of color. How is that existing in San Diego Unified? What are alternatives to school police practices and policies found? And what is school police training in reducing incidents of biases in places on campus? I think we're excited to continue exploring deeply some of these questions because we really got in this conversation exploring, what are the police interactions with students? What are the codes and the different ways that they're saying and informing what a student's behavior or misbehavior is? What is the actual presence on campus? And is there disparity on different sites and how we can get access to that? But this was a space that we said was beginning because we know some of the initiatives, we just didn't have as much data as we would like to see how they were rolling out just yet.
All right. And we'll go into our last area of focus, which is on the next slide, thank you, Brett, which is increasing staff diversity to reflect the diversity of our students. You'll see on slide 19, the actions taken in 2021. And then we'll go to slide 20, and I'll turn it back over to Jordan.
Thank you, Acacia. And as this last space, we also said this was beginning as well, and we recommended the committee develop, the continued development of the Teach Lead San Diego Pipeline and the pathways within the pipeline, and identifying the reasons why diverse educators leave the district in order to improve retention. We thought, especially thinking about this one, considering the last year that we've had where we've seen a lot of resignations or just different things, really being able to unpack, unpack and explore this was going to take this was going to take a lot more data and understanding on our side. And then, the questions that really stuck with us were, what are the specific recruitment practices for retaining administrators and teachers of color and to ensure employment applications are reviewed to ensure the overall language is not detrimental to applicants of color? But again, this was a space that we were excited to kind of delve into, but saw this as beginning with the district, knowing that there were a lot of initiatives that we're looking forward to looking more into next year.
All right. And next slide, please. And what you'll see here is our next steps. The committee identified these. This is some tenants from next steps. We actually have a lot more. The committee has a lot more. But these are high levels of focus. In particular, if the board approves the next recommended action, we'll be training some new members on the committee. And we'll also be talking about ways to restructure our meeting to provide additional in-depth discussion. Jordan shared that we didn't have access to data. And that was not because they didn't, because we actually gave them a lot of data. What happened was the data wasn't actually present. So, during COVID, we didn't always have the same level of interactions, let's say, for discipline. And so, when we did, that's what we were trying to kind of identify is that we need a quote-unquote, you know, normal school year, if there is such a thing anymore, in order for us to do some more thinking on the committee.
And Acacia, if I could just add to that, to really just echo that, we got a tremendous amount of data, like way more than we could have really looked through and explored. But the challenge for us, as Acacia mentioned, just really wanting a, for lack of better words, regular school year where students are in person, and we're seeing how some of these reforms and site-based equity leadership teams and different things are really impacting the suspension, the expulsion, interaction with the police, and are these things actually working? Because some of the data that we were looking at, it was exciting, it was hopeful, but then some of it was like, and this was while students might have been online or working from home. So, we could expect a decrease in suspensions and expulsions and things like that. So, I think as we look at data from this semester and beyond, it will really give us insight into how these practices are really transforming some of the key areas that we're looking at.
That is our report. Board President Barr, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you so much, Acacia and Jordan. And I'm going to be sharing with Marty right now. My screen keeps going off for some reason. Oh, I think you're asking for action to accept the report. It sounds like that's the recommendation.
That's the first part of the recommendation. And Ms. Stolt, I don't know the order of the actions, if we take it all at once or if we take it at the end.
Would you mind putting back up on the screen then if you've got all of the action items?
They're actually not on this slide, Board President Barr. They're in the board item itself. So, there's a recommendation to accept the committee's report and a request then to approve. Go ahead, Dr. Jackson. I'll stop.
No, no, no. Keep going. I'm going to share after you share.
Okay. And then, the second part is to accept the, or approve the recommendation that I'm going to share out loud regarding students, additional students to be appointed.
Oh, yes, absolutely. Yeah, that's right. That's great.
Well, I was going to add on, I think they should be taken separate.
Okay. I agree. So, let's, thank you, Dr. Jackson. So, let's take the first recommendation, which is to accept the ICOC report. Do we have a motion? Looks like Vice President Whitehurst Payne. And do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. And questions, comments for Jordan and Acacia?
Just one comment?
Yes.
I am so grateful for all these folks who are just phenomenal community members willing to support the schools like this and say thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Whitehurst Payne. Other thoughts? Yeah, Dr. Jackson.
Thank you. Love the presentation. Thank you, Mr. Harrison, for being a part of this and really helping us get better for our students. I want to lift up, one of the key components, I was speaking with Trustee Patterson on this, is, and we had it in one of the action items on the reimagining school police, and that is the idea of hearing from our students, the lived experiences. And we were actually talking about that in the mathematics, where we dig deeper into the data. And I think, and Trustee Patterson, you'd probably agree with this, as we were talking about it, is we want to hear what the students are saying about their interactions and really getting their voices. And the second recommendation here is to talk about the composition of the committee, and it's around students and getting more members and more student voice at the table. So, really appreciate that and wanted to lift that up and star that, if you would, because we talked about one, two, and then we went to four. So, I'm going to lift in three there as a key component.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Jackson. Okay. Yeah, Trustee Patterson.
Thank you for lifting it up, Dr. Jackson. I really do appreciate that because you're right. You know, I looked at the guiding questions, as you said, specifically for the reimagining of school police. And my first question was, well, why don't we, why don't we just ask? Why don't we find out? Like, did we do better? I don't know. But I can tell you from my perspective, and Eeny can tell you from his perspective, and suddenly, if you survey a thousand of us, now you have a little bit more of a wholesome perspective. So, no, I really appreciate you lifting that up. And pleasure to, good to meet you, by the way, Mr. Harrison. It's super exciting to have you on the team with us.
And likewise, and if I can add as well, I think we want to center student voice as much as possible. I think the district did their job, and most of our student reps graduated in June. So, we lost a lot, and they tried to get some back on. And so, we've been, now we have Acacia's done phenomenal to bring on more students into it. And as you all hopefully know as well, a student is also our co-chair for the meeting, where the student's actually going to be driving most of the conversation. Because I think it's very important, as you all say, some of the questions we need to just ask the students directly and hear directly from them with that quantitative and the real experiences that they're seeing every single day. So, that is definitely centered to how we want to design and hold the space with the students.
Yeah, I just, again, Jordan and Acacia, I just very much thank you and thank the committee for the work that you've put in. And I know how seriously you've taken this responsibility. And your initial report, the baseline report, is appropriately sobering. We find in these areas that we haven't just been talking about these areas for a couple of years. You know, we've been talking about these areas for over a decade. And appropriately, you know, the committee comes to the public and says, we're either in our beginning stage or developing stage in all of these areas. And that is right, and that is a call to action and urgency, I think, on the part of our board and of our leadership. So, thank you again. So, with that, let's take the first recommendation, which is to accept the report. Trustee Patterson.
Aye.
Thank you, Trustee McQuarrie.
Aye.
Trustee Bazo.
Aye.
Trustee Beiser.
Aye.
Vice President Whitehurst Payne.
Aye.
And Barrera, aye. And now, the second recommendation, which is to appoint a new group of students to the committee. Can we get a motion?
It's moved.
Second.
I think we got a motion from Trustee Beiser and a second from Trustee Bazo. Any comments or thoughts on this recommendation? If not, Trustee Patterson.
Aye.
Trustee McQuarrie.
Aye.
Trustee Beiser.
Aye.
Trustee Bazo.
Aye.
Vice President Whitehurst Payne. Here you, Vice President?
Aye.
Thank you. And Barrera, aye. Okay, great. Well, thanks again so much, Jordan and the entire committee and Acacia for the support and the work that you've done with the committee. Okay, we will move to item G6. These are the recommendations, the final recommendations from our redistricting engagement committee. And let's start, can we get a motion on this item?
It's moved.
Moved by Trustee Beiser, seconded by Vice President Whitehurst Payne. And Superintendent Jackson, do you want to introduce this item?
Thank you, President Barrera. And we're bringing this back after the first reading from December 7. I want to thank Drew, working with the consultant and the committee. As you know, board had some feedback, board trustees had some feedback after the first reading, and the committee came back together on December 9 to refine the recommendation based on what they had heard from the trustees. And during the meeting on the 9th, the redistricting engagement committee agreed to recommend Plan E1 to the board as their recommendation for approval. And those members who were present voted to support this as the singular recommendation. So, I want to make sure that that's clear. The board item and all the attachments reflect the committee's recommendation. And we are asking the board to now take up this for action moving forward.
Thank you, Superintendent. And we have here members of the committee who presented last week, but Andrea, Michelle, and I think Evelyn, if you're with us, did you want to add to your presentation from last week? Did you want to make a presentation before the board takes up the item? Andrea, maybe I'll ask you?
No, we didn't. We did not. We were just here to answer any questions or concerns. Thank you.
Okay. Terrific. Yeah, we have one speaker on this item, and that is Marlin Gardenara. Marlin, go ahead. You've got three minutes.
Good evening.
Evening.
My name is Marlin Gardenara, and it's Scripps Ranch. I'm also a Mission Bay alum. Go Bucks! I'm also the head football coach of Scripps Ranch High School. We appreciate your acknowledgement and support of our recent success. We've worked hard to represent our school, our community, our district, on and off the field. Our success on the field was mentioned, but I also want to highlight our success in the classroom, where we raised our team GPA from 297 in 2017 to 374 this season as an entire football program. Having said that, the pride we feel as a community representing our district may not be reciprocated as Plan E1 would eliminate our right to choose our representative on the school board until 2024. As a person of color, I recognize the merits of better representation, but I absolutely question an attempt to provide representation by taking away others' right to vote for their trustees completely. Better planning, more transparency, even a hint of concern for all of the families impacted, particularly those as well in Scripps Ranch, before taking their vote should be a higher priority. I can't imagine that the only way to reach representation goals is to take away votes. Community input might have made those options clearer. Alternatives could have been found without taking away my vote. A government agency taking away the right to vote is wrong. A government agency silencing a very vocal community's vote is a long way away from our expectation that you educate our children. And it absolutely adds to our frustration as parents that we, as customers, are taken for granted. But when you openly take away the ultimate measure of accountability, it boasts my personal resolve to call them attention issues affecting our families. It also forces us to organize and fight for change with direct support from parents to ensure parents' voices are not only heard, but that we impact decisions, particularly if we can't do it at the ballot. We have successfully taken on the county of San Diego and the state of California and Governor Newsom, directly impacting the lives of 2.8 million student applicants. So, I don't have to run for a school board seat to challenge the status quo, which also disproportionately affects people of color like me and my children. While I haven't ruled out a run for school board, having lived and worked in each of the areas in the current and proposed sub-district B, I will be relentless in my effort to impact change and preserve accountability, even if you vote to take away my vote. So, before I go, I have to ask, which issue or goal would you, as trustees, be willing to give up your right to vote for? Now, imagine being told you were going to lose your right to vote in 10 days. Better representation for minorities does not have to come at the price of anyone losing their ability to vote. It didn't have to be either-or, doing it at the county registrar's deadline, bringing this all up, and it finally becoming information available to the public. It's simply wrong. I challenge you to educate my children. I challenge you to educate people of color. But I don't know where in your responsibility you could only come up with one plan that takes, literally takes away people's right to vote for their representation. There would have been another way had we known it was even an option to lose our votes. Thank you all for your time.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Gardenara. And again, congratulations on the success of the Scripps Ranch football team. I think Andrea wanted to make a point. Yes, go ahead, Andrea.
Yes, thank you so much. So, to underscore that, the committee considered Mr. Gardenara's comments, his public comment that he made previously and similar comments. And while we appreciate the frustration in the lateness of the census, which led to the lateness of the redistricting process, we did vote unanimously to support Map E1 because we do believe that it is the best map to reflect the ethnic diversity of the district, to meet the requirement of compact and contiguous, especially with regard to Scripps Ranch, which now in Map E1, for the first time, adjoins its only contiguous neighborhood in Maramesa. And it meets the other requirements of the Voting Rights Act and the representation requirements of the redistricting process. And so, we did hear the comment about taking away the right to vote. And we did address that in our committee meeting. And we would just share with the public here, for those who weren't able to attend that meeting, that, you know, all voters were able to vote district-wide for their preferred candidate in the last election. The school district is moving into sub-district elections, and they are staggered. And so, by necessity, this school district, like other jurisdictions, has staggered elections for seats so that, to provide some stability to the jurisdiction. And here, too, that's what will happen. And, you know, some districts will vote first before others, but no one's right is being taken away. Everybody in turn will have their opportunity to vote for their district representatives.
Thank you. Thank you, Andrea. And I think Michelle wanted to make a comment. Go ahead, Michelle.
I just wanted to support what Andrea did say. It was a robust conversation, actually, at each meeting, but specifically around the redistricting changes, that these are changes that are going on in every tier of government, that there are going to be people that, whose voting districts change, you know, whether it's a two-year term, four-year term, that particular representatives have. And the other thing to think about is that the entire, as Andrea mentioned, the entire San Diego Unified District voted to change so that everyone doesn't get to vote each, every two years. They only get to vote when their particular sub-district is up. But that was a change done by the majority of the voters in the entirety of San Diego Unified. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Okay, we have a motion and a second on this item. Board member questions or comments? Yes, Vice President Whitehurst Payne. No, you're good? Yeah. Any other board member questions or comments on this item? Yes, Trustee Bazo.
Yeah, I would like to share, just because this is impacting a more than most, that I did meet with Drew Rollins last week and went over all of the maps that were presented. And it really helped me to get a feel for what the committee looked at. And, you know, after looking at that, I really feel like they, I know that they spent a lot of hours on this, and Drew did as well. And I want to thank them for all their hard work. And it was a, I believe it was a fair and balanced process. I think just, you know, it wasn't something that we were anticipating at this juncture. But honestly, I think over the last two years, there's a lot of things that we haven't been anticipating. And, you know, we've all had to become a little more flexible and resilient because of that. I just, I think it's going to provide for a better balanced plurality of the ethnic groups across the district. groups across the district. And just in line with what President Barrera was saying about the item we just discussed about racial justice and equity, having more of a plurality and equality of ethnic groups across the district is one of our goals, and this will help in that, help us reach that. And I also wanted to share that, you know, whatever works out, I will work hard to support all the groups across the district that I represent, as well as the whole district. But I look forward to developing relationships with people in Scripps Ranch, just as I have with all the other groups that I've been, all the other subdistrict areas that I've been involved with. And, you know, again, but looking at the bigger picture, that we do serve the entire San Diego Unified School District. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Bazo. Yes, Vice President Whitehurst Payne.
Sabrina, I want to thank you for saying that last part, because this board has been very active in serving everybody. I didn't, in the past or right now, Baker Chavez and one of the other schools in the Lincoln Cluster is not my school. It's in Barreras area. It's in District D. But I have been to Baker twice this year, because they invited me to come and see as a part of the Lincoln Cluster, and I've done that. I mentioned earlier that something came up in Merameza, that I talked to the person, but the parent felt comfortable talking to me, and we've worked on that. I think that, I don't want to see us go down the pathway, this is my district and nobody else can say or do anything in it. We talk to one another about it, and we serve the needs of the citizens of San Diego and the children of San Diego. I mean, that's my commitment and my pledge as a board member, and I would hope that all of our board members would do that, and not feel that anybody's not being served. Thank you.
Thank you.
Absolutely. I agree with you, Trustee Whitehurst Payne. And I think if we're not lifting up all the students, then we're doing a disservice to all the students. You know, it's not just about one, like you said, one district over another. You know, if there's something in your district that I can help with, it's important that we're collaborating together, because that's how we're going to have success, not being in our own little silos.
Okay, if no other comments, and I would just, again, very much like to thank the committee. This was a hard process. All of these processes, like the committee members have mentioned to us, that are going on in all jurisdictions, this is always difficult. And it always results in change, and change is difficult in itself. In particular, in the case of San Diego Unified, this was further complicated by, as Michelle pointed out, the move from one process that we've had, you know, for a long time, which is that every voter within the boundaries of the San Diego Unified District is able to vote for board representation in each district. Moving from that system to now a system of district-only elections is complicated. And also, a school district has its own particular complications, because the way that voting boundaries are organized can also impact the ability of school board members to represent school clusters, which, you know, the goal is to have those clusters as much as possible together and represented by a single board member. So a lot that this committee had to take on, again, in a relatively short period of time, and we appreciate the thoughtfulness and the recommendations that are coming tonight. With that, Trustee--
President Barrera.
Yes, Trustee Bazo, go ahead. Yes.
Yeah, thank you. I want to thank Matt Kastrinsky and all the members of the committee and the staff, Drew, for all your work. This was not an easy thing. As everybody knows, every 10 years, the U.S. Census requires all government entities across the United States to do this, to redraw maps as populations change. And in Subdistrict B, over the last 10 years, the population has exploded with massive developments in all of Mission Valley, as well as other communities, where a lot of density in housing has been going in. So some neighborhoods in Subdistrict B had to go to balance out the populations. And this mechanism, while Sabrina Bazo mentioned very eloquently, is, Scripps Ranch is a wonderful community, and they're greatly impacted by this situation and by the map that's being proposed this evening. But I'm really grateful for the many years, 11 years, working with the schools in Scripps Ranch and the community and the parents. Because of some of the very strong advocates in Scripps Ranch, we now have air conditioning in all of our classrooms. They were very instrumental in helping to advocate for a lot of great academic changes throughout the year, and helped to bring voice to a lot of parents and members of the community. I do also believe that Dr. Whitehurst Payne was incredibly eloquent when she reminded us all that we represent all of San Diego, because that's what makes our community better. And so it's with that passion that I will always continue to want to know what is best for the students in Scripps Ranch, just like all of my colleagues, as we do about the students in Lincoln High School, Morse High School, and throughout San Diego. We want to make sure that we're providing a quality education in every neighborhood. Thank you, President Barrera.
Thank you, Trustee Bazo. Okay, with no further questions or comments, we will vote on this item. Trustee Patterson.
Aye.
Trustee Bazo.
Aye.
Trustee Bazo.
Aye.
Trustee McCary.
Aye.
Vice President Whitehurst Payne.
Aye.
And Barrera, aye. Thank you again so much to members of the committee and to Drew Rollins for supporting the work of the committee. Okay, we will move to item G7. Can we get a motion on this? This is the approval of tentative agreements with our bargaining units around the COVID vaccine.
So moved.
Thank you, Trustee Bazo. Do we have a second? It looks like, Trustee Bazo, thank you. Okay, if we have no questions or comments on this item, yes, Dr. Jackson.
I just want to mention that it's important to note that each of the units have ratified, with the exception of OTBS. They are in the process of ratification. I just want to thank them for their partnership, and our vote tonight will be based on the agreements, but pending the ratification from OTBS. Just want to make mention of that.
Thank you, Superintendent Jackson. Okay, with no further questions or comments, Trustee McCary.
Aye.
Trustee Bazo.
Aye.
Trustee Bazo.
Aye.
Vice President Whitehurst Payne.
Aye.
And Barrera, aye. Okay, we will now move on to item H1, which is our first interim financial report. Superintendent Jackson.
Thank you very much. And this is our first interim financial report. And I'm going to actually turn it over to Drew Rollins, our chief business officer, who will begin the presentation.
Sorry, I think I have my camera on now, right?
Yes, sir.
Brent, can you please pick up the PowerPoint for us? Okay, thank you. Well, good evening, Superintendent and board trustees. Tonight, I'll be presenting the 2021-22 First Interim Financial Report, which reports on our current fiscal year data through the first third of the year, and also presents budget information for the following two years. Next slide, please. This is the familiar budget wheel, and as you can see for December, we have two items there. We have our first interim, which I'm presenting now, and the external audit of last year, fiscal year 2020-2021, which was presented by Mr. McAllister and our auditor, Pro, earlier this evening. I might also point out just that significant milestone that we see next month with the governor's proposed budget. Next slide, please. When we look at our projections for next year, we need to remember it is based on our current point in time. And as you see here, we must also build that budget, our budget projections, on the guidance that we receive, both from the county and from the state. Next slide, please. Here are the main assumptions at this time that drive our revenue. As you can see, we unfortunately show a continued slight downward projection of our enrollment. You can also see the cost of living adjustments for the next two years as currently provided in the guidance. Next slide, please. Oops, one second, please. I lost my slide. Okay, there we go. We also project expenditures. You can see an increase in employer's, excuse me, employers' contribution to retirement programs, with a jump next year for both STIRS and PIRS. And there's also anticipated growth in health and welfare premiums and the cost of materials and supplies. On this slide, you see we currently track to a balanced budget for this year and next, and then have an unresolved shortfall of $71.4 million for the 2023-24 fiscal year, which we intend to resolve, obviously, as the time draws closer. Next slide, Brent. We put this slide in just as a short reminder about our ADA during a time of declining enrollment. With the pandemic, we've had the opportunity for a hold harmless process for ADA, really resulting in us relying on our 2019-2020 ADA calculation for the last three years. The hold harmless expires at the end of this year, and with that, we will effectively result in a catch-up adjustment for our 2022-23 ADA. Next slide, please. Just as we look at the 2022-23 budget, we worked with, the finance team worked with leadership to balance fiscal year 2022-23. We pursued the solutions you see identified above. Next slide, please. As I mentioned earlier, the first interim is based on a point in time and guidance provided by the state and county at that time. I think we all realize it's a very evolving time for the state budget, and there are many optimistic projections. Here you can see some of the highlights from the recent LAO's report. Next slide, please. Hand-in-hand with the previous slide, here are a few of the areas being discussed and the potential fiscal impact if they come to fruition. Dr. Raucho in our Government Relations Office does a tremendous job of advocating for our district. And as you can see in the third bullet, that advocacy work also includes working closely with our fellow districts across the state. Next slide, please. Said it before, and I guess in this presentation, I'll continue to say it, we build the first interim report based on a point in time and with the guidance provided to us relative to that time. We know there are many factors and many things yet to play out that will influence the budget development for the coming year. The financial team will bring the second interim report to the board in March, leading ultimately to budget adoption in June. Next slide, please. So we're recommending to the board this evening two actions. One, approve the first interim report as presented. And secondly, and along with that, staff recommends that the projected financial outlook for the current year and subsequent two years is declared as positive. We also provide the footnote there that you see, as typical with this process, is just a reminder that as our next report at the second interim, and as the process continues, will have to require, will require more detail filled in. And next slide, please. And with that, that concludes the presentation, and myself and the finance team stand by for any questions or additional information we can provide. Thank you.
Thank you, Drew. So first of all, can we get a motion and a second to approve the first interim?
Aye.
I think it was moved by Trustee Patterson? And seconded by Vice President Whitehurst Payne. Thank you. Okay, board questions or comments on the first interim financial report? Yeah, I'll just jump in with a couple of thoughts. One, I appreciate that the finance team has begun to identify the impact on our budget should our advocacy be successful in Sacramento. And we know that last week, we approved our main points of advocacy, especially around the budget that Enrique walked us through. But some of those key points about not just having this sort of drop-off, as Drew was explaining to us, in, you know, going from 1920 enrollment to, you know, needing to budget for enrollment based on the last couple of years, to have that smoothed out as a three-year rolling average would have a lot of impact on our budget. Continued support from the state in meeting our obligations to STIRS and PIRS would have significant impact on the budget. And of course, you know, with what the LAO is projecting in terms of the increase in revenue that will come to the State General Fund and then to Prop 98, if the legislature is consistent with the principles around LCFF and allocates that additional revenue to districts by increasing the base rate, or the base support of LCFF, that will not only help our district, it will help every district in the state, and it will allow us to focus on our own priorities. And it's the most efficient way to channel revenue into school districts, rather than the creation of new categorical programs, competitive grants, that, you know, result in some districts qualifying, others not. So the impact of these advocacy points really, again, signal that we have an opportunity, not just in the 2022-23 year, but over the next few years, to see really unprecedented levels of funding for public education, really the kind of funding for public education that we've been advocating for for decades. And as Trustee Bazo pointed out earlier about the summer program, it should not have taken a pandemic to get to the point that schools are being funded and our kids are receiving the resources that they've always needed. But we are in this moment where we're seeing resources, and that requires us to make good on the way that we spend this money and the way that we allocate these resources. And I believe that we need to see real impact on students when we have funding at the levels we do now. We know that we have got an ongoing challenge of sustaining those resources, but that's also about advocacy. And that's about pulling our community together to make sure that if we're able to do some things over the next couple of years that our kids have always needed, that we then don't see that funding simply, you know, go away after a few years. So the continued advocacy at the state level and federal level is our responsibility, but it's also our responsibility to make real impact over the next few years with this, with the amount of funding that we're seeing. And to that end, Vice President Whitehurst Payne and I would like to invite board members. Drew pointed out in this slide that by mid-March, by the second interim report, we need to present a budget plan for the 2022-23 year. We know that each of us, as trustees, has priorities, where we want to see investment, where we believe, you know, by putting some investment into our schools and into our students, we can see the most impact. And so we would invite each board member, over the next month, to submit to Superintendent Jackson, you know, a list of your priorities. Where do you most want to see investment now in our district as we have these resources that are coming available? So our job-- So our job as board members is to identify those priorities and ask the superintendent to consider how to incorporate those priorities into our budget plan that we would take up in second interim. It's the job of the superintendent and of the staff to analyze those priorities and to come back to us and say, is the priority that a board member is identifying consistent with the LCAP? Or is it something that is outside of the LCAP? And that's important for us to think about. To the extent that those priorities are consistent with the LCAP, has staff already been working at incorporating these ideas into the budget plan? Or which ideas right now might be outside of the budget plan? And then, of course, what would the cost look like if we were to fund the priorities from board members? So I think it's important for each of us to weigh in with where we would want to see investment. And then that will allow us to have, I think, a more complete conversation when it comes time to adopting the second interim. So any thoughts or comments or questions about this idea of board members submitting priorities to the superintendent? Yes, trustee Bozzo?
Yeah, President Barrera?
Yes.
So in terms of, for example, if I were to have a budget priority or goal, dreaming big, to get K3 class size down to 17:1, I would just need to get finance to run the numbers to cost that out so that we could make that big dream come true if we have the funding for it? Is that correct?
That's exactly the idea. That's exactly the idea, trustee Bozzo. Yes.
Oh, okay. All right. Did you get that, Dr. Jackson?
You've already done it. We've heard the first priority. Yeah. Okay. Okay, if no further discussion, then on approving the first interim, yes, trustee Patterson?
District consultant that we all met with, George Perry. This is very, very similar, correct? What's the intersection there? Because I recall being asked almost the exact same question and then giving the same thing that I would tell Dr. Jackson in about three weeks.
Good. Dr. Jackson, did you want to speak to work with George Perry?
I actually don't know because I'm not privy to the information that folks are sharing. What I think is important, as President Barrera mentioned, one of the things that we are paying attention to as a staff is what is in our LCAP? What are our priorities? And how are we prioritizing those financially? And the additional prong is how are we organized for effort? How are we organized to make good on that as a system? So this conversation is right in alignment with what we are doing. As we look at our LCAP, even the user-friendly version is about 45, 48 pages. And what we want to do is really make this very user-friendly. A couple of pages, here are priorities. What is our three-year plan? What are our district budget priorities? How are we funding those? As we get additional funds, as they become more available to us, where are we investing those dollars? And that's what President Barrera is mentioning. And then, once we have all of that, how are we organized to make good on that? How do we execute our plan?
But you don't have George Perry's data, just so I can clarify.
I do not.
Got it.
Okay, with that, we will vote on our first interim report. Trustee Patterson?
Aye.
Trustee Boizer?
Aye.
Trustee Bozzo?
Aye.
Trustee McCary?
Aye.
Vice President Whitehurst Payne? And Barrera, aye. Great. Thank you. Okay, can we get a vote on item H4, public hearing right-of-way at Point Loma Elementary School?
So moved?
Seconded.
Moved by trustee Boizer, seconded by Vice President Whitehurst Payne. Trustee Patterson?
Aye.
Trustee Bozzo?
Aye.
Trustee McCary?
Aye.
Trustee Boizer?
Aye.
Vice President Whitehurst Payne? And Barrera, aye. Similarly, item H5, right-of-way at Point Loma High School?
So moved?
Moved by trustee Boizer, seconded by Vice President Whitehurst Payne. Trustee Patterson?
Aye.
Trustee McCary?
Aye.
Trustee Bozzo?
Aye.
Trustee Boizer?
Aye.
Vice President Whitehurst Payne? And Barrera, aye. Similarly, right-of-way at the Scripps Mesa site, can we get a motion? Moved by Vice President Whitehurst Payne, seconded by trustee Boizer. Trustee Patterson?
Aye.
Trustee Bozzo?
Aye.
Trustee McCary?
Aye.
Trustee Boizer?
Aye.
Vice President Whitehurst Payne? And Barrera, aye. One more. This is a public hearing again around the Scripps Mesa site. Can we get a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Vice President Whitehurst Payne, seconded by trustee Bozzo. Trustee Patterson?
Aye.
Trustee Bozzo?
Aye.
Trustee Boizer?
Aye.
Trustee McCary?
Aye.
Vice President Whitehurst Payne? And Barrera, aye. Move to item H8. This is, we thought that we had approved this item last week. Turns out we need two readings on our educator effectiveness block grant. Yeah, thank you.
Second.
Vice President Whitehurst Payne and seconded by trustee Boizer. Any questions or comments on this item? If not, trustee Patterson?
Aye.
Trustee McCary?
Aye.
Trustee Bozzo?
Aye.
Trustee Boizer?
Aye.
Vice President Whitehurst Payne? And Barrera, aye. Can we get a motion on the superintendent's consent agenda? Moved by Vice President Whitehurst Payne. Do we have a second? Seconded by trustee Bozzo. We have one speaker on item I53, and that is Dr. Crystal Troll. Crystal, go ahead. You have three minutes.
Hello?
Yes.
Can you hear me? Okay, great.
Yes, go ahead, Crystal. Yeah.
All right, wonderful. Thank you, President Barrera and the Board of Trustees, for the opportunity to provide comment tonight. While my comments are specific in nature, they highlight a larger opportunity. Section 10.7 of the Services Agreement for this agenda item focuses on conflict of interest and states that the contractor should not have, in the previous 12 months, been an employee, agent, appointee, or official of the district. And if so, they should not have participated in any manner in the forming of this agreement. The Chicano Federation is a well-respected organization and doing great work in our community. However, given the language of the contract, it appears that there may be a potential conflict of interest, given that it was signed by an appointee to the Superintendent's Search Committee that was formed earlier this year. I offer that this provides an opportunity to promote transparency, and I ask the district and the board to consider sharing the procedures they use to ensure that any appearance of conflict of interest has been properly addressed, not only for this specific instance, but as an ongoing practice. Good management and governance practices typically include documentation of predetermined criteria used to select a consultant or contractor, reviewing up to three bids from well-qualified applicants, and justification as to why the consultant or contractor was selected as the most suitable to carry out the intended work, which this type of transparency would go a long way to build trust and accountability. Additionally, at the October 26 board meeting, ESR funding plans were presented that allocated $85 million of the $303 million total for health and safety related to COVID, specifically contact tracing and testing. Yet this contract does not mention either of those deliverables, but focuses only on the provision of information on vaccine safety and accessibility for Sandy and Unified Families, with a focus on those yet to be vaccinated. Again, I believe the Chicano Federation is doing great work in our community, and I have no doubt that they would fulfill the contract as outlined. However, I would ask that we look at existing programs that can provide information and outreach to maximize the impact of these one-time ESR funds on what was intended, specifically contact tracing and testing. Finally, President Barrera mentioned earlier, we need to see real impact on students, which I agree with. So I encourage the district and the board to consider how best to communicate any changes to approved plans and how those changes align with and produce the desired impact on students as a result of the investment. Ideally, the district would bring the process full circle by providing actual outcomes compared to intended outcomes for all resources invested, and the ESR funds are no exception. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Troll. Okay, with that, we've got a motion and a second on the superintendent's consent agenda. Any questions or comments? If not, trustee Patterson?
Aye.
Trustee Bozzo?
Aye.
Trustee McCary?
Aye.
Trustee Boizer?
Aye.
Vice President Whitehurst Payne?
Aye.
And Barrera, aye. And that brings us to the, oh, we're doing, yeah, the last item on our agenda, which is our annual meeting. Do non-agenda comment, we'll do it now before, okay, we can do that. We'll move to non-agenda public comment now. We've got 10 speakers, so we'll allow two minutes each. And we'll begin with Erin Paola.
Hi, good evening. I'm here to speak on behalf of my daughter, who attends Longfall Fellow and has been without her first-grade teacher for 11 weeks. These little kids, I recognize that my Senora O'Brien came into the school with a plan to help these kids with the deficit for not being able to go to kindergarten last year. In-person learning versus online learning, especially when you're in a Spanish immersion program, is night and day, and the kids were learning so much. And we've been lucky to have Senora Bertin and Ms. Williams. She's helped as our interim principal, but it's been 11 weeks. Please do not make it 12. We need an adult to step up and advocate for our teacher. I understand there needed to be an investigation, but at a certain point, something happened in a class where, I don't know if you've met a lot of first graders, but they are like the most proficient tattletales in the world. So I feel like if something would have happened, we would have known about it. And my daughter's been interviewed twice, to no avail. And I just plead with you, we really need our teacher back. It's like, I don't want to say anything bad about Senora Bertin because her dedication has just been wonderful, and she is wonderful. But Senora O'Brien is the teacher, and she's like an amazing teacher. Please help us advocate for our children. Please help us advocate for our teacher, Senora O'Brien. And it's really hard to lose a teacher for 11 weeks, unexpected and unplanned. Our school's done an amazing job helping us. Can you please help us get her back? Thank you so much.
Thank you. Sarah Almata?
Hi, good evening. Thank you. I'm here to speak on behalf of Pilar O'Brien. I first met Pilar when she was my daughter's second-grade teacher seven years ago. She's passionate about teaching and learning. She has high standards for her students and works tirelessly to prepare her lessons to ensure that her students are engaged in the learning process. At the root of her educational pedagogy is her belief in community. From the first day of school, she begins to develop that community throughout her classroom, involving both her students and their families. She's a dedicated educator that uses best practices to develop and implement her strategies for teaching. She's enthusiastic and an integral part of our school community. Of course, an investigation would need to be completed when a parent makes an accusation of misconduct. But the egregious length of this investigation has far-reaching implications for the students. These same students only received three months of in-person education last spring and deserve as normal as a year that was possible. As a 17-year teacher for Sandy and Unified School District, I know how important it is for the teacher to be in the classroom. I am standing here before you tonight or via Zoom to really plead with you for the protocol that's in place. I don't understand how quality assurance could justify the length of this process. Is there no protocol in place? Certainly, Pilar O'Brien couldn't be the first person to go through this process. Is there nothing that you, the Board of Education, can do to enforce the timely completion by quality assurance? Pilar O'Brien deserves to be exonerated and to receive a public apology. Please do what is right for the students. Please put the needs of the students first.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Sarah. Heather Laird?
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, Heather.
Thank you again for allowing me to speak. Today is 11 weeks that my son's class has been without their teacher. Yet another week has gone by without any response from any district officials. I believe these students are being ignored, and this is a huge disservice to them. My son did not, because he didn't attend any in-person kindergarten last year, and now this year has had 11 weeks with a substitute teacher. The neuro O'Brien has an incredible reputation, something I have not really witnessed yet because I've only had her in class as my son's teacher for the first few weeks. And I really, we really just want this investigation to be done by quality assurance. It's been 11 weeks that this has dragged on. There's no students in the class corroborating this allegation. And now we're just waiting for weeks and weeks, months, without a teacher. Our students are suffering. This is not fair to our students. At a Spanish immersion school, they really need these first couple of years to be the basis of their education so that they can continue to learn in Spanish later in school. They need these foundational years, and this is really doing them a huge disservice. Quality assurance is not following the posted protocols that are on the district website. It says it can interfere with outside agencies' investigations, but no outside agency has ever really investigated this case. I've emailed you all of these facts. These things did not occur. No background was looked into. Nobody checked any of these things. And no investigation even began until seven weeks after the incident. And then you expect the eyewitness testimony to be reliable seven weeks later when these are children? Eyewitness testimony is flawed to begin with. And then you wait so long to interview these children. It's absurd. Now we're facing the fact that our substitute teacher, who's been dedicated and helping and wonderful in this situation, she's retired and now can't teach forever because then it would jeopardize her retirement.
Thank you.
We are desperately needing our teacher back.
Thanks very much. Sarah Gianella Wyble?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, Sarah.
Yes, hi, everyone. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I am a parent at Torrey Pines Elementary School, and I have been there since over nine years. And Torrey Pines Elementary School has really been an excellent, award-winning school for years. And this is mostly because of our dedicated teachers who have years of experience and passion and love for our kids and their education. Unfortunately, this has changed over the last years, and I am deeply concerned about the current law morale at our school and the mental health status of our teacher and staff. We had an unprecedented tough turnover, and during the last foundation meeting last Thursday, many teachers joined to explicitly ask for our help and support. I am a strong supporter and believer in public school, and I urge the board to turn your attention to the crisis at our school and provide the much-needed support for our teacher. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Rachel Rosenstock? You have Rachel?
I was asked to be unmuted, but my name's Melissa.
Oh, okay. Go ahead, Melissa.
Oh, I just was permitted to unmute now.
Okay, let's do Rachel. Let's do Rachel, and Melissa, you're later on the list. We'll come back to you. So go ahead, Rachel.
Thank you so much. I apologize. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. As Ms. Wyble, the previous speaker, I wanted to address you about the situation at Torrey Pines Elementary, which is really concerning to me. I tried to raise the issue directly with our principal and the QA office, unfortunately to no avail, which is why I'm talking to you tonight. Torrey Pines has received both state and national awards over the years, and the teachers are really exceptional in their use of innovative methodologies and have done fantastic, especially during the pivot to online learning in the past year. I would say that in the past, this was largely due to the cooperation between principal and teachers. Unfortunately, over the last few years, this lack of support by the administration has shown to have an impact on the school and the teachers in particular. It's only thanks to the teachers' hard work and dedication that until now, the students are not feeling these effects. I see that it's not sustainable for the teachers much longer, however. And we parents believe that the teachers deserve respect and recognition for their many years of many years of the excellent work and expertise in what they do, and we feel strongly that the sentiment is not shared by the current administration. The principal, in the past three years, has been unable to create trust between herself and the teachers, and this has become clear to us parents, who are not involved in the day-to-day affairs. We see a lack of communication, micromanaging, and often shifting of blame to the teachers. This is detrimental to the mental health of the teachers. And I believe that communication and cooperation should be the two most essential tools of management, and it comes to no surprise, but it is no less shocking to me that teachers who have been at Torrey Pines for decades are considering or already have left the school. And so I am asking you, the school district, for support in remedying the situation at our school, so that our teachers can provide to continue the excellent, outstanding instruction that they're providing for our children right now.
Thank you, thank you, Rachel. Anastasia Slutermin. We have Anastasia.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Yes, I'm here to join Erin, Sarah, Heather, Melissa, and Vanessa regarding the issue of quality assurance office and absence of Senora Pilar O'Brien, who is an excellent teacher at Longfellow Spanish Immersion School. My son, my two sons were lucky enough to have her as teacher in first grade, and I just wanted to speak on the behalf of the character that she is one of the most dedicated, reliable, passionate teachers that our school had the pleasure of having. It is unacceptable that she's been gone for 11 weeks and how this whole process is being dragged out. And I wanted to plead with the district to take an urgent, you know, matter and look at the situation more seriously, because the kids are suffering. As kids of the Spanish immersion school, it is absolutely necessary for our kids to be with a teacher that can instruct them in Spanish, 100%. And Senora O'Brien, just to give you an example, when COVID happened, and I was a room mom for her class, she was the first teacher to jump on the call with me, learn how to use Zoom, how to make things happen online, to be there with the kids so they wouldn't miss a day of, you know, while everyone else was still taking weeks to figure out how to use Zoom, what to do. And she was the one that was one of the first teachers who wanted to go back to the classrooms as soon as possible, get her COVID shots, to be with kids. She's so passionate about being with the kids, being part of the school community. So it is really disgraceful and frustrating for parents and the Longfellow community to see such an excellent teacher being, you know, put aside and not taken into consideration with everything going on. So thank you so much for your time and listening to me.
Thank you, thank you, Anastasia. Judy Flynn.
Good evening. Thank you for providing me this time to speak. I am another parent of a first grader at Longfellow Spanish Immersion School. As you've heard repeatedly tonight, our children's teacher, Pilar O'Brien, was removed from the classroom over 11 weeks ago after an alleged incident, and I am extremely concerned and frustrated that the Office of Quality Assurance's investigation report has yet to be completed. I believe strongly in the need for processes like this to exist, and absolutely believe that a parent should always voice concern if they believe that their child has been harmed. I also fully understand that investigations can be involved and that they take time, but I question how this investigation can still be ongoing so many weeks later. The Office of Quality Assurance stated that they started their investigation in November after an outside agency had completed their review. Students were again interviewed, this time more than seven weeks after the alleged incident, which seems extremely problematic in and of itself if the goal is accurate testimony from a child of that age. And it has now been another four weeks since those interviews. The protocols that are posted on the Quality Assurance website state that every effort will be made to conduct investigations in a timely manner, and this most definitely does not feel timely, especially during a year where there are no substitutes to spare and students are already behind from last year's less-than-ideal year of remote instruction. I would expect urgency and would hope that resolving this case as quickly as possible would be of the utmost importance for everyone. I respectfully implore you to put immediate pressure on the Office of Quality Assurance to complete their investigation and report so that our students, school, and Senora O'Brien can move forward. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Judy. Beverly R. Beverly, could you please unmute? Okay, we'll go to Melissa Romero. Melissa, go ahead.
Oh, I'm here, wait, I'm here.
All right, Beverly's here, great. Go ahead, Beverly.
Can you hear me? Okay, great, thank you for letting me. How many minutes do we have this evening to talk?
Two minutes.
Two minutes? Okay, thank you. Thank you for this opportunity. I wanted to talk, speak mostly to the parents who might be listening. I'd like to inform the public what San Diego Unified is not telling the parents and students. The school cannot legally mandate a vaccine. That is the California Health and Safety Code 120335B through 1 through 11. And since the mandate for SB 277 over five years ago had to go through legislation, so you cannot, a school cannot legally mandate a vaccine. Also, I went recently to a clinic that's on San Diego Unified School grounds to look at the vials, to see what they're actually giving at these clinics, and they are still E U A, which by definition is experimental. So they are still using experimental vaccines that trials do not end until 2023, and that they still have no long-term studies on. And the school is not telling this information. Also, the SDA, I mean, San Diego Unified claims the students are in imminent harm from COVID, when in fact, the American Academy of Pediatrics reported that for children, the survival rate of COVID is 99.97%, which is really next to nothing. Also, San Diego Unified is not notifying that there's been over 19,000 deaths reported of VAERS, which is the CDC reporting, and that's a conservative number. They also are not telling that, that there's the 1986 Act, which has made vaccine manufacturers not liable for any injuries, and it's all, the parents, the risk is all on the parents and the student. It's also a private choice between your family, and the school should not take a medical bias with the propaganda that's being put through the school. These mandates create discrimination, segregation. Good news today, Los Angeles.
Thank you, thank you, Beverly.
Legislature School District suspended enforcement of injections today. Los Angeles School District, and that's, we should be following them.
Okay, so we'll move to Melissa Romero.
Good evening. My name is Melissa Romero. My son is a first grader at Longfellow K-38. In addition to multiple emails and telephone calls to various district employees and representatives, this is our second meeting attempting to reach out to you regarding the San Diego Unified's Quality Assurance Department's failure to conduct an investigation in a timely manner. I have to ask, did any of you inquire about this issue since last week? It is the district's responsibility to ensure that all students are given a fair education, and denying my child's right to a permanent teacher in his classroom does not meet these expectations or requirements. No one here is arguing that an investigation should not take place. We are here to notify you that the QA department has failed to adhere to their purpose that's listed on the fault, as follows on their own website, "to promptly address concerns and complaints and to facilitate resolutions of concerns and complaints in a timely and objective manner." As stated last week, there has been no sense of urgency surrounding this issue. We have been lucky enough to have a substitute teacher in the classroom, but her allotted hours to be in the class are running low. Longfellow is a Spanish immersion program, and I refuse to wait for my child to be given a revolving door of substitutes who may not even be qualified in this specialty to teach first grade in a Spanish immersion program. If this was your child's classroom, would you find this acceptable? The inability to resolve this matter in a timely manner has a domino effect, and simply put, it's a disservice to many people in the community. Failure of a prompt investigation is a disservice to the alleged victim, it's a disservice to the teacher involved, it's a disservice to the retired teacher who now feels compelled to work full-time for the sake of these students. It's a disservice to the many teachers who can't take a vacation day because they don't have a substitute for their classroom. And lastly, it's a disservice to my child and his 22 classmates, who already suffered through kindergarten Zoom last year. When we have an issue or complaint that needs to be addressed within the district, we are supposed to reach out to the QA department. But who do we contact if we have a complaint against the QA department? We, on behalf of 23 students, are reaching out to you.
Thanks, Melissa.
I implore you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. And Vanessa Pedrosa.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, Vanessa.
Hi, I'm here to speak on behalf of my daughter, Sophia, who is a first grader at Longfellow. She is, she has been along with her 22 classmates. It's been 11 weeks since Senora O'Brien was removed from her classroom. Quality assurance is doing a huge disservice to, to our kids. The lack of urgency in resolving this matter is infuriating. These 23 six-year-olds deserve better. Board members, please consider them. Please consider that they've been without their very passionate, well-loved, and respected teacher for 11 weeks. After a year of Zoom, our kids deserve to be thought of. They deserve for their needs to be considered. They show up to school every day, every day unless they're sick. They show up with smiles. They embraced one teacher for three weeks and, and grew close to her, only to have her ripped away without any, without, yeah, just ripped away. And they show up to learn a new language. That's hard enough, as it is. Board members, I'm pleading with you, can you show up for our kids and be an additional voice for them? Can you do your best to help 23 six-year-olds get their teacher, get their teacher back in their classroom? Pilar O'Brien needs to be reinstated as soon as possible. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Vanessa. Thanks so much. Okay, that concludes non-agenda public testimony. Now, we will come back to the last item on our agenda tonight, and that's item G3, and that is the election of our board officers for the next year. Normally, we do this in person, and we each get a ballot, and we turn it into Ms. Stoltz. We can't do that tonight, so what we're going to simply do is go board member by board member, first for president, and then for vice president, and you can cast your vote. And I will actually take advantage of my position, and I'll cast the first vote for president, and that is for Dr. Sharon Whitehurst Payne. Trustee Patterson.
I'll cast my vote for Dr. Sharon Whitehurst Payne.
McQuarrie.
I cast my vote for Dr. Sharon Whitehurst Payne.
Thank you. Trustee Viser.
Dr. Sharon Whitehurst Payne will make a great president.
I agree. Thank you, Trustee Viser. Trustee Bazo.
I will also cast my vote for Dr. Sharon Whitehurst Payne.
The last time, Vice President Whitehurst Payne.
Since my colleagues have voted for me, I guess I'd vote for myself also. Thank you.
Congratulations. Congratulations, Sharon.
And congratulations to you, Mr. Barrera. We are happy that you've been doing this.
Great, and thank you, Sharon. And I will also take advantage and cast my vote for Vice President for Sabrina Bazo. Trustee Patterson.
I'll cast my vote for trustee Sabrina Bazo.
Trustee Viser.
I'll vote for Sabrina Bazo.
Trustee McQuarrie.
I vote for Sabrina Bazo.
Trustee Bazo.
I guess I'm voting for myself.
Sounds great. And President Whitehurst Payne.
I'll vote for Sabrina Bazo also.
All right, congratulations, Sabrina. That's fantastic.
Thank you.
Well, we're going to have, we're going to have a great year with, with leadership of President Whitehurst Payne and Vice President Bazo. Yes.
Thing to say, that is, thank you. Let's see, was it Melissa, Martha? You have something for him? I was trying to stay under the limit.
Thank you. Yeah, thanks so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, appreciate it. Thank you, President Whitehurst Payne.
Us, on behalf of the citizens, on behalf of the children, I just want to say thank you. You've been through a tough time, and you've held us up, and I just really thank you for all you've done, given unselfishly of yourself to meet the needs of our students. So, thank you.
Appreciate it.
I'd like to echo those sentiments, Vice President, now President Whitehurst Payne. President Barrera, I can't thank you enough for your leadership. In my role as interim superintendent coming into this role under these circumstances that none of us could have imagined, your wisdom, your vision, your passion, your dedication, your knowledge, your belief in all children, in all people, is proof that when we can come together with the same voice, the same values, the same vision, we can accomplish great things. And we are because you are, and I want to thank you for that, and I say, si se puede.
Si se puede. Thank you, Superintendent Jackson. Thank you so much. Yes, Vice President Bazo.
I'd like to echo the comments that have already been shared, you know, especially during this first year and COVID and superintendent search. It's been so wonderful to have such a, a strong leader, but strong in the sense that you're still humble and also very intent on hearing everyone's voice, which I appreciate that, and encouraging us all to make sure that we're sharing. And also just how calm you are under fire, which is very impressive. And so I'm always just, you know, observing that, it's just, I'm just amazed at how you handle it, and, you know, I very much appreciate being able to serve on the board with you.
Thank you. Thank you, Vice President Bazo. It helps to grow up with an obnoxious big brother. I'll just point that out. Yeah, Trustee McQuarrie, yes.
Yeah. Likewise, President Emeritus Richard Barrera. Your leadership has been well demonstrated, your knowledge and skills greatly appreciated. We've gone through some very, very tough years, having you as the officer for the last two years during the pandemic has been outstanding, and we are a much better school district because of your leadership and your presence and your continued service. So, thank you.
Thank you, Trustee McQuarrie. Appreciate it. Trustee Patterson.
Yeah, I think that's right. You've cut the budget, and then you've blown up the budget. I'm sure you have a preference on which one you like more, but without, without question, and you have been such an ally, and I'm so excited to continue being able to serve the last six months of my term with, with you and alongside you, you've been such an ally to students, and someone that I think really recognizes the value that students bring to the table from the very beginning. So it's such an honor to be able to serve with you, to have you as our board president. And Dr. Whitehurst Payne, I'm very excited to have you take over as president.
Thank you so much, Trustee Patterson. Yeah, listen, it's been an honor to serve as a board officer the last couple of years. This is a great group of people. We've got six fantastic leaders, all with unique perspectives, but who all share, you know, very common values, and number one, that's a belief in our, in our students. And because of that, I think we, you know, as Superintendent Jackson, you know, reminds us, we are because of each other, and we're a great board, we're going to have a great year. President Whitehurst Payne is an amazing leader. Vice President Bazo has already stepped into incredible leadership roles, and I just look forward to the year ahead. So, thanks very much. And with that, we will see each other in January. Thank you. We'll adjourn.